We will begin tonight's meeting. Welcome, everybody, to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance. If you could please rise. Couple of announcements before we get started tonight, that this meeting may be audio and video recorded by third parties. We're also live streaming on our township YouTube channel, and there are extra copies of the agenda in the back of the room if anybody would like to grab one of those. And we will move into item number three, which is public comment. And before we begin public comment tonight, I would like to make a comment myself. I've been reflecting a lot on the events from our past meeting, during which I spoke to our residents with disrespect. I've always been somebody that's tried to treat everybody with the same level of courtesy and respect that that I expect. And I was out of line with Mr. De Prisco, and Ms. Swart, Mr. Golden, and another resident who is also here tonight. So I wanted to take that opportunity to really express my apology, own my behavior, and to assure you that I am recommitting myself to this role and leading with respect and treating everybody that way. So I appreciate you showing up always and sharing your thoughts and contributing what you contribute to the township. So I just wanted to begin tonight by saying that. And now I will open it up for public comment. If anybody would like to make a comment about something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time for you to make that comment. Yes, Mr. De Prisco.
Sal De Prisco, West Ocean resident. Thank you very much for what you said. Thank you for the apology. We did all accept the apology part of it. And we do appreciate that, but we do also cite that the meeting that did end that we were not here cited that we some way, shape, or form purported lots, and that we wanted a retraction, that there was not a single lot that was said. We sent an appropriate letter, I think it was worded by Mr. Golden, to the entire board, and we would like that cited that although we accept your apology, we did not accept the comments that was made at the end of the last meeting. That is all.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing done, we will move on to item number four, which is the presentation of the two thousand and twenty-five General Fund, Sewer Fund, Waste and Recycling Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, and Highway Aid Fund budgets, and the approval to advertise with the intent to adopt the two thousand and twenty-five budgets on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So with that, I think we have a presentation.
Yeah, so this presentation was made public, I know it's a public part of the board packet. So my hope is that everyone has had a chance to review it and read it at this point. So I'm kind of just gonna highlight each fund and then take questions if that is a format that works for everyone.
I think that works for me. Is that a thing with the board? Sure. Yes, Ms. Swart.
Christine, would you use a microphone to show the YouTube channel?
Is this side switch on?
Yeah. I mean, the light is working, the arrow is off.
Or standard.
Thank you. I don't know if I did that or you did.
I did that, for this time.
Okay. I can always just tell you, I wanted to switch also.
Try it again.
Try it again. Okay, so Ms. Swart. Okay, so just some highlights for our two thousand and twenty-five budget. We are not proposing a military increase for real estate taxes. This will be the fifth, fifteenth consecutive year without a military increase. We are also not proposing any fee increases to our sewer fee. For trash fees, we will be proposing an increase. We'll get to that later in the presentation when we get to the Waste and Recycling Fund. This is a topic that was discussed previously, I believe it was the two thousand and twenty-three or the two thousand and twenty-four budget, with the last contract, and we, the board, opted to only take a partial increase at that time with the knowledge that it was not gonna cover us for the full contract term, and that we would need another increase, you know, somewhere along the line in the contract term. We have a continued focus on infrastructure. We have a number of projects proposed in Capital Reserve Fund for TMDL PRP plans, as well as a number of stormwater projects. To cover these projects, we are proposing an increased transfer compared to previous years because there are such a large number of projects. And we are also proposing an increased transfer to the Sewer Reserve Fund to ultimately be transferred to the Sewer Authority. Did anybody have any questions about any of the highlights that apply to all the funds within the budget?
I thought I had one question, Christine, I should probably leave it with Brian. I think earlier this year, I forget how long ago, two or three months ago, the board reviewed a potential project for RMS4 permit compliance on Hagerty Lane. And we decided not to pursue that.
I believe that's, I believe that's in the budget.
Okay, so if we're not pursuing the specific project that had previously been presented, what are we keeping in the budget, and what would it be used for?
I was gonna present on that later, but I can answer that question now. So last week, Chester County Engineers had a presentation here on floodplain restoration reconnection as a potential for a project. There's currently one under construction at Kiva, over on Inexton, and they're getting a significant amount of credit in their MS4 for that project. So I had the conversation with Chris Peterson, because he sat for the same presentation I did, and we are going to see if we can find, use that style of project potentially on West Town Road at Barber Park, and potentially on Goose Creek. So the money that we have allocated for Hagerty Lane may get moved to Goose Creek next year.
Okay.
So it's in the budget. We may reallocate it to a different MS4 project, but we have to do more research, but the presentation was just Thursday. So we don't know all the details. It's a couple of the projects for that developer, but the township is getting a significant amount of credit, about sixty thousand pounds reduction of that one project alone. Okay, thank you.
And if we have that information before the final budget, we can update, you know, those descriptions and have to reflect for that project. Did anybody else have any questions on the general highlights?
The only other thing, or just a comment, we'll address later on, is that the amount of transfer to the Capital Reserve, I would like a discussion on that when we get to that particular.
Yeah.
Fine, thanks.
Anybody from the public? Yes.
So I was just wondering about the salary and wage increase. Who says that? You know, I know for myself and other senior citizens, we're getting a two point five percent increase in Social Security. Our Medicare is going up six percent. The average salary increase proposed according to U.S. News and World Report is about three point five percent because of the cooling labor pool and lower inflation. So I was wondering where the four point four comes from.
Would you like me to address that?
Yeah.
So that's, so the, on the right-hand side, the uniformed employees at five point two nine percent, that's based on the collective bargaining agreement between the township and the police, and the officers in the police department covered under that agreement. There is a pay scale, and so it's a combination of officers who, more senior-level officers, as well as newer officers moving through the pay scale. So that's where the five point two nine percent comes from.
So non-uniform is police?
No, that's a uniform.
Okay, so what's the non-uniform?
The non-uniform also have a pay scale that's part of the policy. It's based on, I believe it's a thirty-year movement, and it's through movement through the scale. And much like the police department, on the younger end, it's a higher increase as you move through the scale. So you get to a range between a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. And that's the average based on movement through the scale.
So that was a thirty-year plan, is what you're saying?
It's a thirty-year, it's a movement through thirty years in a career timeline.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Swart. Could you make the pay scale available to the public? I'm able to find that, like, for the state of Pennsylvania employees and.
If you file a write-to-no request, it would be something that would probably disclose under a write-to-no request. And it's broken down by various job categories.
And then when it says net, so is that a part of, in the average, or?
Yes.
So some could be more, some could be six, and some could be three? Is it based on merit or job?
It's a combination of movement and merit based on job performances that are done by all the managers here.
Okay, any other questions on this slide?
I just want to clarify, that doesn't mean everybody's getting four point five, four percent increase. Some are lower than that too.
And then, also, my last question on this page is the proposed transfer from the Sewer Fund to the Sewer Revenue Reserve Fund, two point two five. Is that the one that originally started at one point five a couple of years ago?
Yeah, so much as you know, we've had about annual transfers in the range of about eight fifty to one point two million every year to the Sewer Authority for the last three, four, five years. And then looking at the balance available in the Sewer Fund Township, we had a discussion earlier this year about increasing that for a couple of years. So instead of the one point two five, we have some room to make it two point.
Two bucks.
Two bucks, yeah, this year, so. Yeah, we're moving additional funds that can be used by the authority to invest in the sewer system.
But the, the balance for the Sewer Reserve Fund, as you can see on the treasures report, will stay at approximately one and a half million, you know, give or take.
So it just moves through the Sewer Reserve Fund, comes out of the Sewer Fund, into the Sewer Reserve Fund, and then from there, it goes to the authority.
The township has a contract with the authority, and I believe part of that contract is to keep one point five million in the reserve. Is that something different, or is this part, should this contract be renewed because the authority is coming to the township asking for two point two five million transfers to it?
So the contract is specific to the rent agreement, based on the sewer charges that we have, that they come to the authority to pay the debt and everything else that we have within the authority. It's not really a contract about the Sewer Reserve Fund, that's just an emergency fund in the event that we have a serious sewer collapse, intercept domain problem that is really expensive to fix, an emergency, so it's there as a kind of safeguard against neither the Township Fund or the authority having emergency funds available, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, so, didn't really translate nicely, I guess, in the format, but, you know, along the top is the revenues for the last several years, and a breakdown of how those revenues are split up by type. And on the next slide, there's just some highlights about the revenues. I'll just note, you know, we're still continuing with the Woodlands project. We're anticipating this will probably be the final year for building permits related to that. We are still seeing increased transfer taxes as those homes are completed. We, we're also continuing with the sale of vehicles and equipment on municipal, and that's been a positive gain for the township. So if anybody else has any questions on the general fund revenue specifically?
Yeah, I do, Christine.
Yeah.
The real estate tax has, percentage, its revenues is about nineteen point seven percent right now. What do we anticipate that's gonna go down to as a result of?
For just real estate taxes?
Yeah.
I mean, as a percent of total revenues, I can't really say, because I don't know what things like transfer tax are gonna reduce to, building permits are gonna reduce to, so I can't really speak to a percentage overall. But as Woodlands is completed, and those homes are added to our assessed values that we receive from the county, they're, they're gonna be pretty, pretty flat at that point, because we'll be collecting, you know, real estate tax for all the properties within the township. Right now, it's sort of split between, you know, current year real estate taxes and the interims for, you know, homes that are completed mid-year. But, but once that's done, you'll see everything kind of in current year real estate taxes versus being split between interims.
Okay.
One thing to keep in mind, and I don't know if this is, I don't know how this will impact the overall percentage of revenues. We are seeing a large number of assessment appeals, particularly in the Woodlands development, like, a significant number.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, so, you know, somebody's home in Woodlands is assessed at a certain value, and they appeal it. We then normally have to issue them a refund or something like that, and then from that point forward, it's billed at the reduced assessment that's approved by the county.
Christine, I just want to make sure I've got this right. On these, what is it about the transfer tax, the building permit revenue, and sale of fixed assets? The line states it's proposed to increase. You're really talking about a budget on budget basis?
Budget on budget, yes.
On an actual outcome for twenty-four versus the budget twenty-five, they're going down?
Yes, particularly building permits, and that's really because we saw some really large permits this year related to the shopping center down here with Chick-fil-A and all of those. There were some really, really big permits that came in in two thousand and twenty-four. So if you're looking, two thousand and twenty-four actual to two thousand and twenty-five budget, it is a decrease, but we always compare budget to budget.
And the transfer tax is still relatively high compared to years past, predominantly because of Greystone? And this is, I think it's maybe one more year after twenty-five, whether it's doing some.
I'm thinking it's gonna be
Small.
A small portion carried over into two thousand and twenty-six based on the calculations that we've done with, you know, how many homes were proposed, how many have already sold, those sort of things. We, we track that through the transfer tax reports that we get through the county. So based on what's left, I think it's gonna be a pretty minor carryover into two thousand and twenty-six. But again, I could be wrong. I mean, it's different every year. We don't really know their pace, but.
And when I talked to you, you told me that basically Woodlands, Greystone Development, over the last three years, or joined the build-out of these five hundred ninety-eight homes, between the sale of the lots and the sale then of a completed house on that lot, there's netted the township about three and a half million dollars of transfer tax.
Correct.
And that's gonna end.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, and if you look on the revenue sheets that were part of the packet of budget information, it goes back ten years, so you can really see what transfer tax was prior to Woodlands starting. So we're gonna regress to that amount. I mean, it'll be a little higher because home values have increased since that time, but it's not gonna be, you know, anything crazy significant like we've seen with Woodlands.
Any other questions on the board? Does it come with other questions?
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what happened with the format of the presentation from, from what was posted up here. But again, this was just a sheet showing two thousand and twenty-four budget, two thousand and twenty-five budget, and what the change was between the two. Same thing for expenses, revenues, and we'll see these same slides through all the funds, you know.
Could you go back one step?
Sure.
Just hold it for a second, please.
Christine, you put the PDF up, I converted it, and it shifted.
That, that's probably what it did. It sort of shifted it. So, I mean, I have it in front of me. If anybody has any questions, I should be able to answer it that way.
Mr. Prisco, do you have a question?
No, no, I just wanted to, thank you, that's all, thank you.
Well, is it fair to say that the decrease that they'll have in real estate transfer taxes due to the build-out of Greystone, the earned income tax will make up the difference, because we'll, we'll be generating more earned income? So what you might.
Um, I think, I think that's kind of hard to say, because we've been gaining the earned income tax along the way as those people have moved in. So we're kind of already seeing a part of that, so it's not, you know, we're already recognizing part of that revenue, so it's not fully gonna offset it, you know, when transfer tax decreases, if that makes sense. Because we've been recognizing that increased revenue all along. I mean, earned income tax revenue will probably increase a little bit more as the rest of the homes are built out and those new residents move into the township. But once, once those residents are here, EIT is gonna be relatively flat with, with where we are now. So you're not gonna really see an additional increase in EIT once Woodlands is done.
And I just have to throw this out there, it's no surprise that I don't think you could do on the spot, but you're aware of it. So this year, two thousand and twenty-four, the revenues are projected to be two million dollars more than budgeted. What, and then the real estate property tax is four million a year. So if we work, the township would be so bold to rebate fifty percent of the property taxes to residents and businesses that paid it, that's taken the two million dollar surplus in revenues and put it back into the community. What is the harm in doing that?
Is that a kind of?
No, you don't have to do that.
Anybody from the board want to address the sports question?
I mean, we did have a, shall I say, heated discussion, I'll ask me about the merits of doing that. The position of the board is that we have these one-time revenues that have come in, for example, was the transfer tax, three and a half million. Transfer tax from a Greystone development, it's never gonna happen again in this township. There isn't several hundred acres that someone could build five hundred ninety-eight homes, so that's a one-off benefit that we have from that new development. We also got two and a half million dollars of ARPA funds. We also had, you know, increased interest income in the last couple of years that may or may not sustain. So we've had this one-off generation of new revenue for the township. This board believes we have a lot of infrastructure, and you've been to all the meetings, Marcie, you've heard us talk about the four different buckets of stormwater that we need to spend money on in the next decade. So we've got a good start, because we have funds available to work on the kind of projects that we'll discuss later in this presentation. So it makes sense to earmark the money for future investment. We'll have a discussion later on whether we should move more of this general fund balance to the Capital Reserve, maybe that makes sense. But I would say the analogy to what you just said is, imagine you're a homeowner, and you know you have a leaky roof, and your windows need replacing, and your yard's a mess, and you need to spend some money on it, and you know that. And you come into a one-time inheritance, and you go on vacation with that money. That is not good, fiscally responsible action. So to me, and the rest of the board, at least as far as I know, it makes sense to take this money and use it to invest in the infrastructure in the township, and not to just cut taxes, which would basically be saying, take the federal ARPA money, take the transfer tax that people have paid to move into, into Greystone, and give it to all the residents who own property in this township. I just don't support that.
Yeah, nobody agree with that, just like I would agree with that. I mean, there are many projects that are on our plate that we need to address. We're doing it somewhat this year. In fact, this year, our budgeted revenues are gonna be about two million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars less in our revenues. So our expenses are gonna exceed our revenues by ten point nine percent. So for us to just blow this money away would be not fiscally responsible. And we're in a fortunate situation, as well, we have this, these windfalls, but again, they're one-time deals, they're not sustainable, and we're at an opportunity here to address some really serious issues before the township. For us to do otherwise, I think we'd not be responsible.
And I can, I can understand that if we were three years ago when we had twelve million dollars in reserve, but we're at twenty-two million at the end of this year, so anyway.
Which three million's gonna be paid down, well, off the patches to help cover for some of these projects that we need to deal with. And that's gonna continue on over the next several years in front of us. The other thing is, you have to understand what this board does. We work on a model where, where we have a project before us, we try to do all our due diligence to try to find out what needs to be done, to be done correctly, and also to apply for grants for those projects. So we've been holding off on doing a lot of these works until we get word about when, how we get these grants and woodings. Now maybe we should abandon that money, and just go ahead and just spend money out of the general fund, but then that wouldn't be right either, would it? So, I mean, it's almost like we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. This is what, at least my feeling is, is that we need to fortunately have this windfall, which is, it's a good problem to have. And I think the right solution would be to do what is best for the common good, for all the residents who are in township. We have to address these serious issues in front of us that need to be taken care of.
Any other questions?
I did have a question, Mr. Helman, do you think that's some of your?
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Ryan Weber. Do you consider all of your constituents to be in a situation that they would not be able, you know, that they might want the windfall of a rebate, that they may be a senior citizen that needs to replace their HVAC system immediately, and you have this, this money sitting there? I mean, I think Mr. Walsh, by his personal view, said that he thinks a hundred percent surplus is sufficient, because, and, and analogy to a personal finances. I think, I don't think everybody in this township has the luxury of a hundred percent. I think, I don't think everybody in this township has the luxury of a hundred percent emergency fund.
I'm not going to dispute that, but what we would rebate would be nowhere near to be able to the cost for replacing an HVAC system. I just did that myself. It cost me eighteen thousand dollars. We're not talking about giving that kind of money. It just isn't going to be happening. We're only charged two mils for our real estate tax, which is the smallest amount of all the taxes that we have to pay. And as far as the county is concerned, we're right there in the middle, not the top or not the lowest. We're right there in the middle. And so what we charge on the way to taxes and for what they did for the township is a pretty darn good deal.
I don't think we're talking about what you're charging. We're talking about a rebate. And I would also like to know if the board considers a rebate a one-time expenditure?
Not considering a rebate at all?
We're not considering a rebate at all. But if you did, would it be considered a one-time expenditure?
I think the one thing you also have to look at is if we have this surplus now, and we have a couple of emergencies, which we've had and we will continue to have, especially with the stormwater infrastructure. If that's the case, we spend now this money, we don't have reserves, and we have more emergencies that come on, we're going to have to increase the taxes. That's going to hit the senior citizens and all a lot worse than the rebate money we give back to them, because now we don't have any money. So now we have to increase our taxes to offset the money that was spent on emergency infrastructure. So I want one to do that either.
Forgive me. I went to answer the question, would it be considered a one-time expenditure?
We're not even considered a rebate, so we can't answer that question. Come on, take on it.
Yeah, you also have to understand another situation we're dealing with, and it's hard to determine when that money is for need to be spent. And that is, we have thirty thousand feet of corrugated metal plating that's existed right now in the ground that serves as a stormwater management in township. And we've been replacing that in pieces, but we still have a long ways to go. There have been situations where in my own neighborhood, where there had been sinkholes developing in people's backyard, because this corrugated metal pipe was installed back in the late sixties and early seventies with a thirty-year lifespan. Do the math. Since already, you know, twenty-five years overdue, this corrugated metal pipe is rusting out, it's falling apart, and is creating real safety hazards for a lot of folks immediately. So we don't know when that situation may arise, where we get another phone call from a resident saying, what's going on in my backyard? I got a big hole there. And we got to go in there and have emergency faces have to address it. And that has happened. It's happened in my neighborhood, along Ravens Lane there, in Eagle Road, where we had to replace about a thousand feet of it. So it was something we did not plan at the word, but something we had to address. We have a fortunate problem here. We have surplus monies available, but we have need for it for the township, for the greater good of all the residents of our municipality.
Are there any other questions from the public on this part of the presentation? I don't hear none. You can continue, Christine.
Next, uh, you?
I think it's working. I don't know if I'm in the right movement, but this is where I might be, so that's fine. So we'll move on to the general fund expenditures. Again, just some historical numbers, the breakdown of how the expenses are allocated per department. And if we go on to the next slide, these are just some highlights of the overall general fund expenditures. You know, we always see fluctuations depending on what the projects are for the given year. I'll just sort of go through and highlight a couple of the main, of the main ones. We are, we have some improvements to the administration building with adding handicap access to the front door, you know, increases in small tools to replace firearms for the police department, an extra capital contribution, as well as the contract contributions to fire and EMS departments, and, you know, continued progress with our TMDL and the RV plans. So if anybody has any questions on the general fund expenditures, I'll save those now.
Couple of questions, Christine.
Sure.
Also, there's another item here that, have you considered the Greystone Park acquisition? And what that may mean as far as expenses for the township? We're planning on acquiring one hundred sixty-two acres, basically open space. So it's going to become our responsibility once we accept dedication. How would that figure into our budget for next year?
I think.
I think we planned on that through the, through the ten-year capital plan, as well as budgeting that in the capital reserve fund. We'll also look to see when we get the park endowment that's included in the financing, how that would be allocated. I stand by, I think that's going to be an asset that we're going to have to live with and kind of learn and develop over time. I had conversations with Lori and Mike. I think you've been part of a few of those discussions. I'll put you on the spot, but I think that's just going to be something we're going to have to learn. We're going to have to learn about. Would you agree?
Yes.
So it's hard to plan for. It's hard to plan for. We have the equipment allocated in our ten-year capital plan now.
Go ahead.
I'm just going to, just to follow up on that. One of the items that we had prior discussion with good fellowship in the inheritance company was that we were going to purchase an ATV for that use. Now, is that included in the capital? Is that what you mean by the capital contribution?
Yes, that's the capital contribution of the.
So that was like a nine thousand dollar.
That was our portion of.
I was going to say, there are other municipalities.
Yeah, there's other contributing municipalities. Is that right, Chris?
Yes, there's five.
So that's, that's our share of that capital contribution.
I remember that Chad said that he's hopefully going to get a grant for that. So hopefully by the final budget in months' time, we'll know whether that's happened or not. And if so, we'll be able to pull that out.
Yeah, as long as we know before, we can pull it out and not. Just because it's approved in the budget doesn't mean we have to spend it if they, they do find out about the grant, you know, after the final budget's approved.
Just for my own clarification, can you reconcile the last line here? Transfer accomplished to capital reserve for debt service and funding of major capital purchases and projects to increase, a net increase of one million eight hundred forty-one dollars. With the budget highlights on page two, where it's proposed transfer from general fund to capital reserve for major capital expenditures and projects to three million dollars.
Yeah, so that, the difference that's noted at the bottom is just the net increase of the transfer between what we transferred in twenty twenty-four and what we're transferring in twenty twenty-five. So the transfer for, I mean, and this includes the debt service payments also in this net, but the transfer from general fund to capital reserve for capital projects and improvements was two million dollars in twenty twenty-four, and we're proposing three million dollars for twenty twenty-five.
The one thing to, just to add on that, the one thing to remember is with a lot of our major infrastructure projects, like we talked about earlier, we've been able to utilize the ARPA funds to pay off a lot of those. So we're now going to see increased leveraging on the capital reserve fund to fund a lot of those projects.
Yes, the ARPA funds are bound, it sort of real allocates back to the capital reserve.
Christine, how much debt do we still have on the municipal complex?
You know, I don't know.
About two million?
I know we're winding down. I honestly, I don't want to misspeak. I don't have that in front of me. I don't know offhand, but that's something that I can definitely.
And we believe the interest rate on that is less than we're earning on the balance of the general fund, correct?
I think so, yes. Yeah.
Any questions from the public? Go ahead.
So now we'll move on to the.
It's not working.
No, it's not working. So maybe it was you that moved it. You can keep going to the sewer fund. So we'll move on to the sewer fund. The sewer fund, there's not really any major changes in terms of revenues. We're not proposing a fee increase, and we're still anticipating continuing the CD purchase program that we've done the last several years. So that's, that's really the only major changes or, you know, relevant pieces to the sewer fund. If you have any questions?
Try it and see if you can advance it.
I have a question on that one, please.
Okay.
I believe the one point five million that was referenced earlier that we need to keep in reserve for any emergency, that's separate from, I believe, not only are the expenses in the eight to nine million range, we also carry a balance of eight to nine million. Why do we keep such a large balance for that?
Well, that's sort of what Sean was discussing before about increasing the transfer to the sewer authority to fund some of those capital projects, so we will be seeing a decrease in that fund balance. But yes, the one point five million dollars is held separately in the sewer reserve fund. It's marked separately on the treasury report and everything, so that's not included here.
Right, so then that balance, not to keep at the end of the year, of six to eight million, whatever it is. You know, why don't we pull that?
So Margie, that, that will decrease because of these increased transfers from the sewer fund through the sewer reserve fund to the authority for the capital expenditure. So the capital expenditure plan for the sewer authority is fifteen million dollars over the next ten years, of which about five million is going to come from our municipal partners in the sewer system, so West Town, East Ocean, West Whiteland, et cetera. So we have a significant expenditure of capital still to go on plan refurbishments of the pump stations and the repair work that we need to do to the collection system. So the fact that we have these increased transfers in the near term allows us to fund that ongoing expenditure.
So that's the balance, right?
So the balance will be coming down.
How's the seventeen million dollar bond that's been spent?
Yeah, that's been spent. We've spent over thirty-five million dollars in the last eight years on the sewer system. We've got fifteen million more to go that we have planned. It's a fantastic system. You should go take a tour of it. Mike's right here. You can go take a tour with him.
The project for sewer logging was left basically, just put together with the top taking. Then we had to pay the.
Were there any other questions on the sewer revenues? Okay, I'm going to the expenses. Again, just some historical numbers and, you know, the key highlights. Chemicals, that's sort of based on what's bid out, what bids come in, and also, you know, the new equipment takes new items. And we're proposing an increased transfer to the sewer reserve fund for the sewer authority. If anybody had any questions on the sewer fund expenses?
Any questions from the public? No?
We'll move on to waste and recycling. So for the waste and recycling fund, the board had reviewed, I can't remember offhand if it was the twenty twenty-three, it was sometime in that time frame, this twenty twenty-three budget?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two budget. An increase for the waste and recycling related to the new contract that we had signed at that time. We had proposed a bunch of different scenarios, and the board sort of settled in the middle and said, we'll take a partial increase now, knowing that we'll need another one before the contract is up. So that should have been actually twenty twenty-four, based on the original projections, but we were able to hold off one more year. So we're looking to increase the fees for twenty twenty-five to cover the balance of the expenses for the trash contract through twenty twenty-six. So if we go to the next slide. I've put together some scenarios for the different fee increases to get us through this trash contract, which is through twenty twenty, the end of twenty twenty-six, correct? So in twenty twenty-six, we'll be rebidding that, and we'll have, you know, new contract prices, and we'll reevaluate them. But to get us through to twenty twenty-six, when this contract ends, my recommendation is a one-time fifteen dollar increase starting in twenty twenty-five forward. Part of that recommendation is based on the estimated fund balances that you can see there in the twenty twenty-six column. At, you know, no increase, five dollar increase, you can kind of see, we're very, very low. That's not enough to cover our monthly expenses. Even at a ten dollar increase, an estimated fund balance of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is not enough to cover a quarter's worth of expenditures, you know, to cover the time period in between when our billings go out. Another piece to remember with that is this estimated fund balance is looking at the year in its entirety, so it's accrual-based. So it is accounting for all four quarters of the bills in these numbers, but that's not necessarily when those funds are received. For instance, our final billing for twenty twenty-four will be booked to twenty twenty-four, but those bills actually don't go out until January, and we're not going to receive that money until January. So there's a little bit of a, you know, cash flow issue there. So that's sort of my recommendation and as to what.
So we can only use the trash fees collected to pay for the.
Correct.
For the trash. We can't use anything from our general fund and capital reserve fund. Cash means we'll be.
Correct.
Can you expand on that a little bit? I mean, is that legally the way that we're bound to?
Yes, because the sewer fund and waste and recycling, they're proprietary funds. They're intended to operate as a business. They have to be funded through fees charged for those services.
In other words, we can't transfer some of the general fund surplus to waste water?
Correct. Correct.
So, and Christine mentioned the, the contract, but in addition to just paying for the, for the service contract, we also pay for tipping fees for disposal. So combining those two together, we're paying, I believe, last month it was two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the contracted service, plus, well, it was about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, plus about eighty thousand dollars to actually dispose of stuff and recycle, and process recycling.
Part of the concern too is with the tipping fees and the sale of recyclables to, you know, to dispose of our recycling. Those are very, they're commodities, so it's driven totally by the markets, and we have no control over what it's going to cost us to, for those fees. And just this year, with the way the market turned, those fees ended up doubling and tripling for several months before they just came back down. So I built, there was a little bit of a cushion built into those years, but if that's something that, you know, repeatedly occurs or occurs in this, you know, sustained at that level for a long period of time, you're going to further reduce your fund balance, which, you know, if we're only looking at, you know, five or ten dollars, you're not going to have enough of a buffer built in to cover those quarterly expenses.
Well, even with the fifteen dollar increase, isn't West Ocean very low compared to some of the other townships surrounding us for this fee?
I would, I would say it's not low. I would say it's more comparable. Because like where I, where I live in a neighboring community, we pay, we're just going up to, I think, a hundred and sixteen dollars per quarter, and we get less service than.
Yeah, that's, that's another piece of it. The West Ocean has higher service, so you can't necessarily compare our fee to some of the other townships, because most other townships are only offering once a week pickup and things like that. So it's not really an equal comparison, but.
Does the contract run through twenty twenty-six?
Yes, till, till the end of twenty twenty-six.
So if we were to do the fifteen dollar increase at the end of twenty twenty-six, would be the eight hundred and fifty-three thousand?
Yes.
And then it looks like, and then it would renew, and obviously we'd have to, I guess, reevaluate.
Yeah, we would, we would be reevaluating in twenty twenty-six for the twenty twenty-seven budget, because we'll hopefully have those bid contracts, you know, that we can work and address.
I think in twenty twenty-one, the contract's about sometime in the summer, I believe.
I, I don't remember. I mean, it was too long ago at this point. But another thing that I just want to note with that too is, taking an increase right now, you're only going to see three quarters worth of that increase for twenty twenty-five. So because we bill in arrears, the first bill of the, of, you know, actual funds coming in, not accounted for, you know, accrual-based, based on, you know, the accounting standards, cash-based, we're only going to get three quarters of the new fee in, in twenty twenty-five, because the January bill, because we bill in arrears, will be for twenty twenty-four.
And that's built into this number?
Yes, that's, it's built in that way to these numbers.
And one comment I would have, Christine, I mean, we've been reducing the year-end balance of this fund for several years, and it needs to be well over a million dollars. We take, we took that smaller increase, so fund balances come down. So if we were to take the fifteen dollar a quarter increase going into twenty-five, the projected eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar year-end balance at the end of twenty-six would be twenty-six percent of the forecast cost of twenty seven. And I know we don't know the actual cost of twenty seven, because it's going to be a new contract. But that's pretty low. It's basically one quarter worth, so it's.
I agree.
Close to the edge, really, to the.
I, I do feel like fifteen dollars is, you know, pushing it, but hopefully, you know, some of the expenditures are coming lower, and we'll have enough, you know.
We have, we have stable revenue. We have, we have stable revenues because it's this fee base. People pay those bills in general. The costs are also pretty identifiable, because most of the cost is the Republic contract, except for the tipping fees, which we're exposed to.
Except for the tipping fees and the cost to dispose of the recycling, yeah. Yeah, those are the only things that are not contract-based.
I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Or any questions from the audience? Yes, consider if I have some.
So again, thank you for asking the first question, whether the contract goes through. What, has the fund ever run, and then again, a quarter up to this point, is it run negative?
No. I mean, we have run into issues in the past, changing contracts, not having enough money in this fund, but that was before my time and before anybody owned this, this board's time, but.
So obviously, there's contract provisos, because as tipping fees go up and go down, we have to cover accordingly. Is there any other provisos negotiable or otherwise to change service or anything to essentially save money? I'm thinking like proviso that would be associated with fuel costs.
I mean, we don't have any fuel costs built in here. That would be, like, I guess, a line item call.
That would be included.
No, no, I recognize it's in the contract. The contract, whoever Carter is, obviously, has provisos for allowing the charges to go up based on tipping fees.
So.
Well, the tipping, the tipping fees are assessed by the Chester County Solid Waste Authority.
That's outside the contract?
That's outside of the contract, yes. Yep, that's outside of the contract. That and the disposal of the recycling is outside.
And the recycling, the recycling is taken to BFI and King of Russia.
Okay. So then the, the contract with Carter is actually fixed, it's fixed, but there's no provisos in that portion of the fees?
Yeah, the contract is fixed based on the order for the five-year contract.
Now, when the contract goes to renew, the board could look at things like, you know, reduce into once a week pickup or, you know, different things like that, but we're locked in through twenty-twenty-six.
Regardless of, because I'm sure that at the beginning of this contract, they were looking at diesel cost up here and now we do the cost of.
That I can't really speak to.
Well, that part's probably.
I do not know.
Yeah, that I wasn't.
Just, just my not working out, so I talked about tipping fees doubling and tripling. Can you quantify that, and again, percentages, but given for a given quarter, what were the tipping fees at the high compared to the tipping fees below?
I do not have that in front of me.
How about order negative?
I can tell you the check that we signed for a month of October, the disposal fees in the Chester County Solid Waste Authority were about eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand, so would that be considered a high one or low?
Some of that is not all.
Yeah, some of that's also disposal.
And some of that's for street sweeping, so that's not all encompassing for just waste and recycling, but that's a number, that's definitely numbers I can get, I just don't have that.
Yeah, I'm just curious on the delta, so that would, you know, kind of justify or not justify a particular fund balance. Like, okay, if the risk per given month is, you know, five thousand or fifty thousand per month, so makes, makes rationale.
Yeah, it, it really can fluctuate significantly from year to year, month to month. What I did in my estimates is I sort of looked at where it's been over the last few years and kind of took an average and applied a minor increase to that for, you know, year to year, so there's maybe a little bit of a cushion built in there, but again, we can.
Alec, can I help you out on that? So actually, in our monthly bills to be paid this month, we have, the Republic contract is a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the tipping fees at Chester County Solid Waste are forty-two thousand eight-hundred dollars. So actual waste and recycling bills to approve tonight are two-hundred-eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars.
Okay, so you don't have, like, a previous couple of months?
Yeah, I know.
I can, I can tell you, I did go back and look at just the past charge records for the expenses going out. On a given month, it's any, the expenses for the waste and recycling fund are anywhere from two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. There's also been months where it's been as high as, like, three-hundred thousand dollars. It kind of just depends on what hits when and sort of where we are in the year, but they're generally in the two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar range per month for the expenses in the waste and recycling fund.
That, that's very helpful, thank you. Then the last question I have is if you're never, if I'm going to get the negative, do you know the lowest number to achieve approximately?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't offhand, but that, that's, again, something I can, I can get with the lowest of that, that's been pretty fast.
Yes, Ms. Worf?
This question really doesn't port any here, but do we know how many residents actually put out their trash twice a week?
I have wanted that number as well. I don't know that we would be able to even get it.
The next, twenty-twenty-five, six, negotiations to twenty-twenty-seven?
Yeah, I just feel like we're paying, like, a premium service, but most residents aren't using that premium service, so.
The twice-a-week pickup again?
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, it's a conversation that this board has had many times, I think, and I'm certainly not against having it again.
There's nothing we can do about that?
I think, I think while we bid the contract out, we'll bid it both ways, we'll ask for pricing for twice a week and bulk every week, and then we'll bid it out with once a week, maybe bulk every two weeks or something, we'll get some differentials. I mean, it's one of those issues that people feel strongly about either way, right? You'll have a lot of people who really like the level of service and some people don't care that it's only, that it is twice a week. But we should certainly bid it out so we get the, the difference in pricing that that is costing us.
I'm sure you'll just get pushback at that increase, that people are going to say, I feel like we've used the twice-a-week service anyway. Why do I have to pay for it?
Remember the debate we had over mattresses and charging people to put mattresses out? We decided not to do it, so it's, it's a big issue.
So I do, I do just want to know that the preliminary budget for the waste and recycling fund does not include any increase, because I didn't want to put an increase into the document without, you know, the board approving the value, so that will be updated for the final budget.
So you need, you need a decision now then, right?
Yeah.
So it's.
Ideally.
I mean, we're not approving a budget, we're just giving you direction and food in what you're going to advertise, correct?
Correct. Well, the, the budget will be advertised at.
As is.
As, as is.
As is here, with no increase.
With no increase.
But then the final budget we approve, you're recommending we approve a fifteen-dollar increase?
Yes, so for the final budget, it'll be revised, that'll, again, be part of the board packet and all of those things, and that will reflect whatever increase is decided at that time.
But you want the decision tonight, really?
So that I can update the, the numbers for the final budget, that is something that will be asked.
Okay.
Should we do that, Bill? Absolutely. So does the board have any strong feelings about the number?
I, I did look at the ten versus the fifteen. The ten is just sales too close to the wind at six-twenty-five, six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand is the year-end balance. You know, we've got these two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-month bills or more. It just doesn't, it's below kind of twenty percent of the natural annual expenditures if you look at twenty-six. So I initially started there, but I convinced myself that fifteen is the right decision tonight for me. So I would make a motion to increase the waste and recycling fee by fifteen dollars a quarter for twenty-twenty-five's final budget.
I'll sit it.
Agreed. Any public comment on the motion that's on the board? Hearing none, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero.
Okay, so I'll work that into the final numbers and when the final budget document comes out, it'll include a fifteen-dollar increase in the sewer rate.
Very good.
Oh, I'm sorry, waste and recycling rate. Okay, so we'll move on to waste and recycling expenses. I think we've talked about most of them at this point between, there's, there's not many, many items in here. We, we talked about the collection fees related to the contract and the tipping fees and the cost to dispose of our recycling. So if anybody has any other questions on that, I can answer those.
Real, real quickly, the two thousand four, no, twenty-twenty-four budget to twenty-twenty-five, so if you multiply the fifteen dollars a quarter, so sixty dollars a year, do you know how many residents, how many bills go out?
I want to say it's around sixty-five hundred, close to it. It's a little bit, it's hard to get a solid number right now, because we're adding new accounts literally every building because of workloads. I'd like to say it's around sixty-five hundred, close to that, so.
So the revenue at fifteen, I'm just looking at, how much does that go up?
So if you go back to the previous slide.
If you go back, yeah, if you go back to the previous slide, it's on here, what the revenues will increase, what the revenues for twenty-twenty-five would be with, with the fifteen-dollar increase, and it is still not covering the expenses for, for twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Any questions on waste and recycling expenses?
I don't think.
Okay, so we'll move on to the capital reserve fund. So capital reserve fund is pretty minimal in activity. The only revenue sources that the capital reserve fund has is interest-earned cash accounts, any grants that we receive, and transfers from the general fund and restricted parks for capital expenditures. As we discussed previously, the township has applied for a number of grants, a lot of which we have received, so that's a significant revenue source in the capital reserve fund. But the caveat of that is a lot of the grants are not received until the end of the year, or until the end of the project, I should say. So if these projects are completed in twenty-twenty-five, we're not going to see that money until the end of twenty-twenty-five, so it's not going to be available to our cash flow to cover the monthly bills, hence the increased transfer request from general fund to capital, or, yeah, from general fund to capital reserve fund for, for twenty-twenty-five.
So I'm going to mention that additional transfer, but I'm going to wait until it goes to the expense.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Does anybody have any questions about any of those items?
Ms. Worf?
Yeah, why is there a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar difference between what was budgeted for revenues or?
So a lot of that is because of the grants, because we budget for the grants, but they're not received until the projects are done, so we budgeted for grants in twenty-twenty-four, but those projects haven't been completed yet, so now we're not anticipating receiving them in twenty-twenty-four and they're carried over to twenty-twenty-five.
We, we have over a million dollars in grant funding that's still outstanding while we're completing.
Yeah, there is a number, a number of grants that, you know, we know are awarded to us, but because the project's not completed, we haven't received those funds yet, so it's unlikely at this point that those projects are going to be done and we're going to get that money before the end of the year, so they're, they're carried over and part of the twenty-twenty-five.
Like the community part?
Yeah, the community part, the solar.
The solar, the IRA rebate for the solar and G R A project, that's included in there. We have the Grandford North Hills, that's four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I don't think, we didn't budget for the one outstanding grant for community parks because we haven't heard the award.
Right, yeah, if, if we haven't heard the award, we try to budget for it, because we don't want to inflate those numbers with something we're not sure we're going to get. So the, the grants that are reflected in there are ones that we have won for, yeah.
The only one that I'm confident that we received this year was the sixty thousand dollars through KICO for the rebate infrastructure project that was completed.
Yeah, that's correct, that's, that's the only one we received so far this year.
Of what was budgeted for twenty-twenty-four?
By received, you mean actually received?
We actually received it, yeah.
We received, I believe we received those in September.
Something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
When we receive that grant funding, does it go right into the capital reserve or does it go to general and then transferred?
It depends. I don't, I think that was a check that came in, so that was, that was a check that came in, so it went directly to the capital reserve fund, but depending on who the grant is from, sometimes they send them via ACH and it'll go into the general fund and then we have to transfer it out to the capital reserve fund. It kind of just depends on what the funding source is, like, who it's coming from.
But it always ends up in the capital reserve.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Worf. Any questions?
Okay, so we can move on to the capital reserve fund expenses. We, for the capital reserve fund expenses, we already talked about the capital purchases that are part of the tenure capital plan at previous meetings. The only other major expenditures are in parks and in roads. Parks for the community park project, that's been on, and all gone topic of discussion for the last several years, and then the road projects that are related to the TMDL PRP plans that were required to do. There's some other stormwater projects that are in there in addition to the sidewalks for Rosedale Avenue.
So just a comment on that. So I think it's worth an explanation to everybody who's heard us talk about stormwater projects, about these four different categories that exist, that we talk, one meeting we'll talk about one and another meeting we'll be talking about another. So when you look at this list up here, the MS four permit, DMDL PRP plans, Brian often introduces projects that he has stacked up that we're trying to meet our permit requirements with, and at the last meeting, we talked about the government services center basin and the work that was required there, and that's a half-million-dollar project, and we have the half the funds to do that particular project. So there's more projects that need to be done to meet our goals and our targets. You know, we haven't quantified the actual cost of all of those, but they fall under this category of PRP plans. The second bucket is this crisis that we have in certain neighborhoods around CMP pipe, corrugated metal pipe that's failing, create sinkholes or whatever else. You know, we, we often can help keep the cost down by doing it in-house. Our public works do a great job. They've been working throughout the summer on Fresh Meadows and doing what they can there, but there are things that they can't do. We've got these CMP lining projects that we have approved, just at the last meeting, we approved an additional piece of work in Fresh Meadows. And I think, you know, there's also deep stormwater lines that we don't have the capability to do in-house, and we're going to have to pay to get it done. So as Mr. Helman said earlier, we have thirty thousand feet that we inspected, about twenty to twenty-five percent of it is in poor shape, danger of collapsing, and we're trying to methodically work through fixing that. And just Fresh Meadows alone, we're going to probably spend upwards of half a million to a million dollars in that one neighborhood addressing a thousand-odd square, a thousand feet, so that is kind of a big bucket of expense that we face in the years ahead. So on this particular list here, Fresh Meadows and Andrew Drive fall into that particular category. The third category is like on this one, Montgomery Avenue, a couple of years ago, it was Ballma Street, where we have these culverts in the major highways that are just designed wrong from the start and are in terrible shape and need fixing. Ballma Street, paid for out of American Rescue Plan Act, that was a million-dollar project. We've applied for a grant for the Montgomery Avenue project. Hopefully, we'll be successful. That's a million dollars right there. If we're not successful, I will be advocating to this board that we go ahead and fix that problem that's existed in this township for as long as I've lived in it, twenty-five years, and try to get that addressed. So that's a third category of spend that is in the first two. And then the fourth one is the feasibility study that we did for the sixteen neighborhoods in this township that have little to no stormwater control, and it needs some, we have issues that neighbors, that residents in those neighborhoods bring to this board, complain about problems and walk in the township, do about it. So again, our strategy's been to try to address them through a grant process, and the first example where we hope we've been successful is to have the first phase of our North Hills, which is on this list. We've got a grant for that, and that's a project for twenty-twenty-five. That's a half-million-dollar project, in which eighty-five percent, I think, is funded by a grant and the rest is being paid for by the township. It should significantly improve the flooding on West Penn Drive that's been there ever since that neighborhood was built. So you've got four different categories of spend here on stormwater that add up to significant infrastructure costs in the years ahead, and that's why this, these one-off revenues that we've received recently from things like Greystone should be earmarked to address these problems going forward. I would like to suggest, in actual fact, that we increase the transfer from general fund to capital reserve fund in twenty-twenty-five by further two to two-and-a-half million dollars. So instead of three, I would suggest five, five-and-a-half million. Still is plenty of money in the general fund, which is a more flexible place to have money, because you can deal with operational emergencies and other issues that could hit the township through weather events, because once you move money to the capital reserve fund, it's stuck, you cannot move it back. But we know we've got significant expense in years ahead. I think it will be in line with some of the suggestions and the position that the board has relative to using this money for infrastructure investment. So I would like to suggest to you, staff, and the board, that's a reasonable thing to do.
That's definitely something we can do, and with direction from the board, that's a change I can make from the final budget. The only thing that may offset that is I may adjust some of the CD values that I had in the general fund, so that might, you know, decrease interest a little bit on the general fund side, but you're, you're not talking anything.
Like, not really.
You're not talking, you're not talking anything really significant, but that, that's, you know, just a counter impact of, of increasing that.
Yeah, it would reduce the general fund revenues a little bit, but you can, I mean, you would, you could obviously invest it in the capital reserve fund, because this would be surplus to the requirements you have for twenty-five, so you could certainly give CD in the capital reserve fund, but not benefit that fund.
Yeah, we would evaluate, you know, sort of what the timeline for those projects look like and just, you know, the cash flow for that, and we might be able to do a CD in the capital reserve fund with that extra money. Yeah, that's definitely something that we can do. I believe it would bring the fund balance down to like 17-ish million in the general fund with an extra $2 million transfer.
Just to understand, is there any limitation on us being able to invest monies in the capital fund as opposed to being in the general fund?
No.
Okay.
No, we could, we could do a CD, you know, from either fund regardless.
The $5 million transfer would bring the capital reserve to?
I do know offhand, I don't have that sheet in front of me, but it would, whatever it is, we'll note this year.
I think your projection.
It would increase it to $2 million.
I think the year balance is showing a 3.8, so it would be now 5.8, which isn't far off from some of the balances we've had in recent years.
Yeah. Board's thoughts? Sean's up.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I don't believe so, but are we going five or five-and-a-half? I heard two numbers.
I personally probably just keep it at an even five.
It's a case of two million.
Yeah, to increase it to 2 million, so that it would be an even $5 million transfer. Okay, yes, Ms. Ward.
So, the 2024 budget versus 2024 proposed, that's a difference of 4.5 million, so that you did not spend in capital reserve that you had budgeted. So, is that 4.5 included in the 2025 budget, or like what?
So, the expenditures that were proposed in 2024 but are not projected to be spent are carried over into the 2025 budget and are part of that 2025 budget figure. That just goes to when the projects are approved and bid out and the work sort of gets done. We budget the full project value in the year that it's proposed, but it doesn't necessarily always shake out that way between contractors and things like that.
So, a good example, Margie, is the North Hills, right? We actually got the grant at the end of '23, so we budgeted to do the project in '24, and here we are at the end of '24, and we're just kind of finishing up the design, getting the easements approved, so it's, didn't happen in '24, it's going to be '25 spending.
Well, another, just to kind of piggyback on that, another good example is Fresh Meadows. We had allocated that between Arba and the capital reserve fund, it was around $2 million combined between both of them, and that was based on having a contractor come in to do that, and now we've been doing a lot of that work in-house.
Right, and that's still a significant carryover between 2024 spent and 2025 spent.
I believe it's roughly like 1.3 or 1.4 million.
Something like that.
So, just to confirm, you're increasing the transfer from general to capital by $2 million, but you are not increasing expenditures or expenses?
It's.
Yeah, they will stay, the capital reserve fund expenses will stay the same.
And then, I ask Mr. Bayshore, he said something at the last meeting that I had never heard before, and it was very interesting, and I learned something, when he said that tax that you not tax are included in your military for one-time expenses?
That's not what I said. What I said was, under the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, there are things that you can assess millage for, capital projects are not one of those. For example, if the board wanted to, they could assess a specific tax for, I believe there's shade trees in there, I believe there's parking racks, I believe there's fire and mess as well, if they wanted to do that. But capital projects have to be funded through interfund operating transfers from the general fund to a capital reserve fund. You cannot assess a specific millage rate to cover those costs.
So, you're putting more charge and bill for, for say, stormwater?
Correct.
Right through to Bayshore.
I have a question from Mr. Bayshore. My last time here, I asked if we compared our numbers to other townships, and on page four, and many other budgets, but on the 2023 budget, you noted these figures are not out of line for the size and scope of the township's operations. Can you just let me know what kind of method you used to arrive at that statement?
You look at the, you look at the cost that we pay for services. For example, I'm not picking on anybody, but our police department is roughly 34% of our general fund budget. That is in line for a police department of this size, that was what I meant by that.
Right, like what comparisons are you making, other townships of this size?
Yes. We are the second-largest municipality in Chester County. We operate with roughly 100 employees, we have full service, parks maintenance, road maintenance, police department, it's comparable to all those.
So, you are comparing our township numbers to other townships?
I'm looking at it based on my experience and what I know.
Yes, sir.
I might make a, you make a comment about some of the work in Bunnied House. What that's, Bunnied House is not charged against the capital?
Just the materials. Just the materials. Only the material costs. So, the allocation, if you look in the general fund, the cost for salaries, benefits, those are all broken down in the general fund. So, a project like Fresh Meadows is done in-house, there's not additional compensation for those employees, that's the cost for the material to do.
Any other questions? So, then, all that's left is the liquid fuels fund, oh, this doesn't work again, can you just go to the next one?
Try.
Okay, there we go. All that's really left is liquid fuels and the American Rescue Plan Fund, both of which have very little activity. The liquid fuels, the only revenue there is the state grant that we receive, and that's based on?
It's based on, it's part of the gas tax, based on the mileage.
So, we get an estimate from that, or an estimate from the state for that grant, that's what we use in this budget, and the expenditures that offset that is we use that for a portion, we use that for a portion of our paving project every year. So, typically, the amount of money that we receive from the grant is not enough to cover the project in its entirety, so there's usually a split portion of it being spent from the liquid fuels and the balance being spent from the general fund. Does anybody have any questions on liquid fuels?
Why do we ever spend that down completely from year to year? We obviously leave like 40 or 50,000 dollars.
Um, just for in case of emergencies, we actually add that.
Actually, I don't, actually think you can, you can spend it all the way down.
You're supposed to keep.
Yeah, you're supposed to keep a buffer.
Yeah, you're supposed to keep, it's, you know, prudent to keep a buffer in there, but also in case of emergency, we had that the other year, we ended up drawing additional funds from the liquid fuels because there was, I think, significantly more base repair or something like that in the paving project, and so we drove it down a little bit further, so sort of a buffer in case, you know.
And the 1.2 million dollar number is comparable to what was budgeted for 2024, I think that was 1.15.
Yeah, and I think it was less mild or slightly less.
Do we have a list of the roads for next year to be updated?
I don't, I've seen it, I don't have it off the top of my head.
But if I ask the board or second, you know, kind of.
I don't have, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Would Mark have that?
Mark would have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, so is Carol Engineering, and again, Mark puts together, that could come in under budget, like this year's paving project came in roughly $300,000 under budget because he put in a certain percentage for base repair, we didn't have to do the base, there was no base repair on this year's project. And you're not, you're not going to know that until you start building.
Just out of curiosity, why do we need to use the outside engineering firm for that? Is that something we can handle?
That was the specific reason why Carol Engineering brought in here initially in 2007 or '08, they worked on that project. That's what they, they do, they, they help us with our capital projects and our capital budgeting.
Is Brian capable of doing that?
Brian's a very busy man with all these stormwater projects, so he's always pulled in different directions.
Brian's more than capable of doing it.
Well, that's my, that's my point, I know he is too.
Well, I have to, I can only leverage him so far.
Does Brian need an assistant?
Probably.
It's prudent at some point to budget for the system as opposed to an engineering firm. Capital first expense, we know, nobody wants to hire, but. And how many miles of roads do we have here in the township?
Roughly 100, just under.
So, we do approximately what, five miles of road per year?
About, approximately, like I think last year's was 4.36 miles, and this year's 4.5.
So, you, township resident, you live in the township, you expect to have your road done at least once every 20 years?
Are they done at the same frequency, or are you basing on use, this is obviously, I use more often in, you know, the dead end.
We, we track every year, so the streets department has been planning, using a highlighter since 2004, but now we're going to have all the maps for the paving program in our GIS systems, and we can see when each segment, when they were paved.
Right.
They're back over, I think, about 20 years now.
Okay.
So, if something was paved in 2009, you know we're not going to pave it until it's, it comes back up, unless there's a problem.
So, I'm saying, are they routinely coming up on the same basis regardless of use, or is it weighted based on the traffic flow?
That's a, I can't answer that question, but I can tell you that the plant, general township plan is to pave approximately five miles a year.
Right.
So, your roads come up once every 20 years.
Yeah, so it sounds like that it's an equal weight, where ones might be needed every 10 years and others might be there every 30 years, because it's a driver, you know, there's five cars on the cul-de-sac or something like that.
I can't answer that.
It's a good question, I don't think we have the answer. I mean, I live on a cul-de-sac and it hasn't been paved in 25 years that I've lived there.
Well, there you go, we're getting our money's worth on that cul-de-sac.
So, I'm going to make sure it gets paved next year, I have that. That's a joke.
Any other questions on liquid fuels? None from the board. Okay, so then, all that's left is the American Rescue Plan fund, this is the money that was received during the COVID pandemic that we've been utilizing for stormwater projects. We had originally anticipated that we would spend that fund balance down by the end of 2024. As we've already discussed, that doesn't necessarily happen as you get into projects and things get delayed and things like that. So, we are looking at a carryover into 2025, but again, we're anticipating that this money will be spent by the end of 2025, and I believe it's required to be spent by the end of 2026. So, there's, there's no additional revenues coming into this fund other than interest earned and cash balance, and on the expense side, we're still continuing to use that for stormwater projects, which is currently Fresh Meadows and the Government Services Center basin.
And how much did we receive in total from Arba?
I believe it was like 2.29, 2.4 million.
And those monies will be committed by the end of this year, right? There wasn't any money left on the table.
Correct.
The last, the last project will be before the board for consideration to award it next meeting.
Any questions from the board or from the public? All right, okay. And then the last slide is just a summary of the capital requests, but again, we've already discussed that at the previous board meeting where the capital plan was approved. This is just to highlight that, yeah, that's all I have. Any board thoughts on this final request? No, I think.
Nothing changed from what we last reviewed.
Correct. Yeah, I think we're pretty satisfied with that. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, Christine, that's a great presentation as usual. Thank you for the part of the board as well, so.
So, we need to make a motion?
We need to make a motion then, yes, to approve, to advertise the 2025 preliminary budget. Okay, is there a second? So, with Sean, okay. Any public comment on the motion? Yes, Mr. Holden.
So, what was published, I think, last year was just a portion of the entire report, but I have to compliment the board in what we just saw, not in the slideshow, what they presented as the report. So, for public, will we see these pages? Will we see it all? Will we see all the details?
Everything that was posted for tonight's meeting is what's going to be published.
Thank you, great job.
And I'll, I went back and looked at exactly what was posted last year, it was identical. I posted the same stuff last year as I did this year. Maybe not the 10-year capital plan, because that was included in the September meeting, but I know a lot of that information was also posted.
Right, I think, I think that was a big missing part.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, yes, Ms. Ward.
Well, this topic, the, the next meeting, just further, I didn't discuss it.
I don't think there's any further discussion.
It's just, yeah, but it's on the 17th.
December 17th.
Just a question on that, so is it a 30-day-from-tonight thing, or is it just that, what is the actual criteria? Is December 17th too early to approve it with a 30-day notice?
I don't know the answer to that question, I will check it to be sure, but my understanding is that it's the month prior's meeting. I don't know that it's a 30-day requirement, I think it's a monthly meeting requirement.
It's a 20-day, well, I just looked it up, it's a meeting, it's a 20-day, but it has to be approved by the 31st of December.
Right.
Before we go on the motion, just want to thank Christine and everyone who's contributed from staff towards this, this budget preparation, I think it's a great job that you did, very clear, the level of detail is very good, I mean, it gives everybody now another 30 days to digest it, if you have further comments, we can change things up until the December 17th, so I don't think it will be based on what we've just heard tonight, but thank you for doing that.
And we'll incorporate the changes that we discussed for the transfer and waste recycling. There will, there will maybe be some additional changes to projected actuals based on, you know, the expenses and revenues that come in with me now and then, but the 2025 budget numbers won't be affected based on, other than what we discussed, so. Excellent, yes.
The insurance cost, I didn't see anything about medical, dental, vision, was there an increase, decrease?
I believe it was a five, I worked that one.
It was roughly in that, I think, 5.8.
5.4, 5.4 net difference across medical, dental, vision, all of those things, so. Okay, there's no other comments, we'll vote to advertise. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Hearing none, motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, and with that, we're going to move on to item number five, which is the discussion regarding applications before the zoning hearing board, and tonight we have application number 11-2024, which is the application for 706 East Market Street, seeking variances from section 84-55 I and 84-55 II zoning ordinance.
Yes, so, before the board this evening are, is only one application, has only one application moving to the zoning hearing board next week. As a quick update, application 12-2024, which is for 851 South High Street, known as the Exxon, they were originally scheduled to go before the zoning hearing board next week, however, have tabled that until the December meeting due to reorganizing the plans. So, before the board this evening is application number 11-2024. This application is for 704 East Market Street, Associates LP for the property at 706 East Market Street. The property is located in the C5 General Highway Commercial District and is a multi-tenant building currently on site. The applicant is seeking a variance from section 8455 I I of the zoning ordinance to permit off-street parking spaces on a different lot than the proposed use in order to permit a new restaurant space in tenant status I, and the property where 51 parking spaces are required. The applicant is also requesting a variance from section 8455 I II to permit less than the required number of parking spaces for the proposed restaurant. For the applicant this evening is Cameron Wolfson from Riley Riper Holiday and Color Greco, as well as the property owner.
Okay, thanks, Shelby, good evening.
Oh, thank you, Shelby. As Shelby mentioned, my name is Cameron Wolfson from Riley Riper Holiday and Color Greco. We are attorneys for the applicant. With me tonight is Eli Khan, representing the property owner, and Jason Botcher, representing the proposed tenant for the coming use. Again, as Shelby, so to summarize, we are here tonight for the zoning hearing board application for the property located at 706 East Market Street. There are two variances as part of this application, one being to allow off-street parking to continue being provided off-site, that was approved in 2019, but with the incoming tenant, we're going to request that again, and the second variance being to permit fewer parking spaces than is required, and we'll get to that in a second. On the screen here, we have an area of the property, located again at 706 East Market Street, it's directly across from the lawnmower, zone C5, general commercial. We're currently, it includes a one-story, 18,700-square-foot building, which houses four commercial tenants. The applicant plans to replace a vacant 600 The applicant plans to replace a vacant 6,000 square foot unit previously used as an axed own business, known as Stumpy's Hatchet House. That is new with this new tenant, which is called Wonder. There's no land development proposed as part of this application. So Wonder, it's considered a fast find food service, partnering with world-renowned chefs and restaurants to deliver a variety of award-winning cuisines. As mentioned, we do have Jason here with us. You can get into more detail with you, but I'll just provide this a brief overview. So of the 6,000 square feet that they will be utilizing, only about 900 square feet will be dedicated to dine-in seating with approximately 10 tables. The remainder will be used for operational purposes for kitchen in the back. So what you see on the screen here is simply just an example of what typically the Wonder unit would look like. This isn't what's being proposed for the site specifically, but just to give you an idea of what the front looks like when you walk into the building. So Wonder uses self-serve kiosks with its business model focusing heavily on e-commerce. It utilizes mobile apps for delivery, which accounts for about 80% of its sales. Less than 5% of all sales are actually dine-in orders. At their peak, there's about 13 employees on site and they operate from about 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, with their peak hours from about 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So what you'll see on the screen here, it's the current parking situation that again, it was approved in 2019. But this is the, you'll see here, there's, let's see if this works here. So in red here, there's 51 parking spaces on site that there is additionally, as we see here in the red spaces with the X crossed out, a recorded shared parking agreement with the adjacent property at 704 East Market Street, same owner, granting access to 48 additional parking spaces. So they have available to them 99 parking spaces through what's on-site plus the adjacent easement. Here's a further breakdown of the chart showing the uses that would be proposed as part of the building and the total required parking spaces. So based on the zoning ordinance, the proposed use is technically classified as a restaurant, which requires one space per 100 square feet across floor area. So in reality, due to the e-commerce focus of the business and the fact that only about 5% of the customers actually dine in, and again, I mean, that's about 900 square feet utilized for dine-in purposes. It really, it's, it's much less than the technical zoning ordinance requires. There are 60 spaces altogether for the one, for 100 square feet. But as Eli and Jason can note, we believe that, that we're confident that the 99 spaces currently on the property are far more than adequate to help you with the parking spaces that are available. So the other restaurant on the property, I'd like to note on this Rolling Star, which is adjacent to it, they operate from about 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which minimizes overlapping parking demand and ensures the complementary usage patterns between the tenants. So we're here, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but.
This is taking over Stumpy's plus the one next door. What's next door?
Just Stumpy's.
Just Stumpy's.
It'll remain four tenants.
Yeah, real quick, Jason, yes. Hello, Eli Khan, property owner. Shocking we're losing Stumpy's. You know, Hatchet going, didn't work out everywhere we're supposed to. But we are delighted to have a company like Wonder. You have to hear their story. It's incredible story. It's reflective of how we all dine. In fact, in the New York Times today, there's a great article about how the traditional sit-down restaurant, TGI app, Ground Round, those kinds of restaurants are just closing at a stand in case. And it's largely because how we all changed our eating patterns during COVID and how that's, how that's a continuing forward in the future. And these guys have an incredible story, which you have to hear. Shelby, you know, rightly classified this as a restaurant because your ordinance is very comprehensive in its definition of a restaurant. This is really not a restaurant. It's a tiny, tiny portion of the space allows people to eat. I think there's somewhere between 10 and 20 actual seats. But when you hear this, I'd, I'd like Jason to tell you the story and I'd like you just to come back and tell you a little bit more about what's happening in the marketplace. And this being a use, you're going to see more and more in your township and everywhere. So I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you. So I'm Jason Botcher. I'm an associate director under government scheme over at Wonder. Super excited to be here. Really excited to be coming to this part of Pennsylvania. And these guys, they, they stole most of what I had to say, to be honest. From a high level, I, you know, I can get into the operations, but to really give you an idea of who we are and how we differentiate ourselves in the market is, is the way we approach our business, not only from a customer standpoint, but the product that we provide. So what we do is we partner with chefs and restaurants across the country, whether they're celebrity chefs like Michael Simon or Bobby Flay, or best-in-class restaurants across any number of cuisines. Dafara Pizza out of Brooklyn, I'm a Jersey kid, sorry. Jersey food with pizza, so it's definitely off the beat. And, or, or Chai Pani, which is award-winning Indian street food out of North Carolina. Dafara, not Dafara, Tejas Barbecue outside of Dallas. What we do is we take these partnerships, we reproduce their menus and their cuisines, their recipes in our kitchens, in our restaurants, throughout our service area. And, and with our production techniques, we're able to locate anywhere from 15 to 30 restaurants and one 3,000 or 3,500 square foot kitchen. So that we're not just providing you Dafara or we're not just providing you with, with Tejas. We're giving you any number of different cuisines, high-quality cuisines out of one space. And that's really how we differentiate ourselves in the market. And then obviously, like, like you said, we're very cognizant of how the world has changed post-COVID. Consumer trends have changed, the way we eat, they've, that's changed. We all order out a lot more than we probably should, which I shouldn't say that, considering what we're working for. But, you know, we, we, we've built our business around the understanding that, that everybody has certain expectations. And that is good delivery, fast delivery of high-quality food, and that's what we try to deliver. So out of this space, like it was noted, it's about a 6,000 square foot space. About 900 square feet would be dedicated to a front of house. I think you can see from the photographs here, I can believe this is our Midland Park, New Jersey location. We put a lot of care and a lot of thought into how we design our front of house. It's all meant to be efficient, warm, welcoming, and, and someplace that a customer wants to walk into. Turns out that less than 5% of our customers opt to dine in and take advantage of the front of house, but that's okay. Again, but we also provide the amenities required, whether it's a self-serve kiosk. We also have a front of house ambassador, that is their menu greet guests that are coming in to either dine in or pick up their orders. With that, we are, we do have a, a heavy e-commerce presence, whether it's our own app. But you can also order through any number of third-party apps, whether it's Uber Eats or Seamless, things like that. And something you didn't know is I woke up last week to the news that we decided to go ahead and buy Grubhub, so, yeah. So that, that's really the high level of where we are. We have pretty aggressive expansion plans over the next two years. And we'll be, we'll have a heavy presence in the Philadelphia market, down to DC, all the way up to Boston. I'll be giving these all up and down via the mid-atlantic over the next 18 or so months.
Jason, can you give the board an idea of who founded the company and where the show came from, how many stores are open, how many?
Yeah, the, the history is interesting. So I will note, my background is actually in planning and zoning. I was a zoning officer and urban planner for the town that we actually have our principal production facility in, and they decided to poach me from there. So I've been with Wonder for, for three years now, and the company we were at that time was drastically different than who we are now. At that point, we were a mobile delivery business and essentially we had Mercedes Sprinter vans with kitchens in the back. You'd order on the app, same partnership model in terms of celebrity chefs, best-in-class restaurants. But you order on that, this, the Mercedes would show up. We would finish the production, the food cooking and the preparation in front of your house, deliver it hot. Just thinking about that model and it was, the reception was great, but when you think about that model, it's capital intensive, to say the least. And so Mark Glory, who's our founder, has had a lot of success, success as an entrepreneur. When he took over the business officially, he made a very, very aggressive and immediate decision to shift our strategy to traditional brick-and-mortar. In the 18 months since that time, we've now got 30 locations open. We'll have another six, or five open by the end of this month, with 90 by the end of next year. And with that, obviously, with the purchase of Grubhub, the, the vision for, for the company goes beyond just simple brick-and-mortar. We're, we're really looking to, to build something significant here in the food world, whether it's, you know, grocery delivery restaurants.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's an amazing story. It's insane place to work, to be quite honest. It's very high-paced and changes every day, but it's a lot of fun.
Any, any questions for Jason?
So you'll do delivery too?
We will do delivery, pickup and, and dine-in, yes.
So this newest concept is only three years old?
18 months.
18 months.
Yes, and we're constantly iterating. So whether it's, it's, you know, iterating the food and how we produce and cook and prepare, introducing new restaurants, new partners or new white label restaurants that we develop in-house. We have an incredible slate of chefs that, that are on staff, that have worked in Michelin-starred kitchens. And now they're on our R and D teams for, for our culinary leadership. Beyond that, it's, it's iterating the back-of-house design to make things more efficient and drop down to order times, you know, and your delivery times. It, like I said, it's a very fast-paced environment.
I'm just curious how Mark came up with this model for this, and where you got the statistics from when people aren't eating in restaurants? You said it's a very low percentage now after COVID.
Yes, you know, it's, to a certain extent, I guess you can call it luck, that you, you know, it's probably the wrong way to frame it, but the company was founded pre-COVID and that was the, the, the model with mobile restaurants is what we call them. And then, then with COVID, you know, it, it became very clear that the market was shifting. And, and you see the statistics, you've seen, you know, dining patterns are changing. You see it on the news and, and delivery is up. And, and we don't want to forego the opportunity for our guests to dine in. It just turns out that no matter how nice we make a, a front of house, it's less than 5% of our guests that do opt to take advantage of it. In, in urban environments, it's a bit higher. We have, I don't even know off the top of my head, I think 12 or 13 locations in New York City right now. They see a, a lot of foot traffic and you'll see a lot more people dining in in those locations. But when you look at your suburban locations, it's a, it's a much smaller percentage of, of our guests.
And then you change your footprint based on where you.
We'll flex based on, on forecasts for any given market and that'll flex the, the front of house size or the number of seats in, in any given front of house, and, and that's the way we approach it. It's a clear differentiation between the urban and suburban markets.
So 80% of your business will be done through one line order, is that?
Yeah.
Did you anticipate?
Yeah.
So folks would be coming to this location, parking, going in, picking up and leaving, is that the idea?
Yeah.
Have you considered doing a drive-through window?
Uh, we are looking at that at some locations. I don't believe it's something we're contemplating for this particular location. And even as we've discussed the drive-through concept, it's not a drive, it's more a pickup lane than a drive-through lane. There would be no, you know, order of menu box or anything like that. It would just be, you know, you get a notification on your phone that your order is ready and you utilize pickup lane as opposed to getting any party walking in, but not for this particular location.
Just from my understanding, you already, back in 2019, I remember we had this discussion when the planning commission all that, you know, got the hats in place and selling liquor. We think, you know, what could go along with that tomorrow? But anyway, it looks like it didn't work out anyway, but you already have a declaration of easement for all-site parking for this location, do you not?
We do, yes.
So why you do have to go before the zoning hearing board, asking for a variance then for all-street parking for this?
Oh, let's see, absolutely.
Okay.
My understanding is with the incoming use that they would need to agree, agree, I guess, need to get permission essentially since the easement itself covers, I mean, it's laid out in there, but essentially the uses that are currently in there. There's no amendment that needs to be done to the shared parking agreement, but I think out of an abundance of caution, we're just asking approval from the zoning hearing board for that provision that requires on-site parking only at the use.
So last thing you just asked us to, I think there's a primary, even though we have shared parking easement, because the zoning, Shelby really has to classify this as a restaurant based upon the way your definition is read, it requires 60 parking spaces and we don't need 60 parking spaces for this use. And, and I want, I also want to say something. The kiss of death for any landlord, any retail building, office building or industrial building does not have enough parking. So no one scrutinizes our tenant mix more than me because nothing infuriates tenants more than when their customers can't park. So, you know, as many of you know, this went from the old Westchester Electric facility, which had been Westchester Electric for like 40 years. We tore off the front of the building and created the parking that fronts on East Market Street, reduced the overall size of the building and created these retail stores. So we must have done that, I guess, around 2019, John, 2018, but, so we had, Stumpy's was an original tenant, they didn't make it. The Bar Three Studio was an original tenant, they didn't make it. Bar Three was replaced with F45, which is another fitness concept. The very new use of the salon, I don't know what you call it, the, the tenant that we have there now, the salon, which is 5,000 square foot tenant almost, with multiple salon hairstylists within. It was kind of a brand-new concept. It was one of the first ones that had come to the Westchester area. So where your traditional salon might be a thousand square feet and it houses three or four stylists, the facility that we have here is about 5,000 square feet and it has, you know, 15 or 20 independent contracted stylists. Really new concept. It's taken off everywhere across the world. So in, in a little shopping center like this, a little strip centers, you have to be flexible. But again, the reason we chose Wonder was not only is their story great, not only is the product great, it's from our perspective, we have a 6,000 square foot piece of space with a very low parking usage. We saw dental office, we saw other medical uses. The Red Cross was close to a letter of intent with us for this 6,000 square feet, but I couldn't accommodate the parking of all the people coming to donate blood and all the, all the folks taking the blood and all the administration staff. So I just have to say, we can't, we can't donate. So we're really happy that they're here, they've signed a lease. Obviously, it's conditioned upon being able to get through the zoning hearing.
I know we've been through a lot of these, which just remind me, fast food restaurants, are they the same classification? Like takeout, they're all under this restaurant?
Yes, they are. Yeah, your, your ordinance doesn't really, some ordinances do differentiate. And this whole concept of takeout is, you know, at what restaurant do you go to that doesn't have a takeout section almost anymore? Such a, or a rack where they're preparing food that was ordered on Grubhub or DoorDash. It's become a reality. So these guys have taken it to a completely different level where, you know, they're, you know, curating this kind of world-class food and offering for takeout or, or delivery. It just doesn't fit into your definition of restaurant.
So you're proposing to keep the lot essentially exactly the way that it is?
It is, yeah. We're not, we're not adding more parking, we're not taking parking away.
Because otherwise you would have to add parking.
Correct, and we just don't have any place to have. And, and again, you look at like Sherwin-Williams, all the parking that you see in yellow. I mean, at any one time, the busiest time you could ever be in Sherwin-Williams, there might be five people in Sherwin-Williams.
Well, so I will bring this up because, I mean, I love that little strip mall. I go to Rolling Star all the time. I think it's very close to go. At their peak, and I know you said that their peak hours would not overlap with your peak hours, but it's, it's almost impossible sometimes to find parking in that little area.
Okay, that's great. I'm glad you brought that up because as part of the Wonder fit-out, they're creating a hallway to allow customers to park in the back of the building and come in from the back.
Okay.
So again, if you, if you go there once, you'll know, and a little advertising on our website to help people. So that entire back parking lot, where you see the solid red, the cross-ass red, is almost always empty because there's just nobody back there.
Can people use that?
It's 100% available for use everywhere.
Okay, because it's not clear.
Well, you know, that's a good point. We should add some signage back there. There's your parking in the rear.
Because I had the same problem. Or I've had to park at the showroom, just don't have.
I know that the hairstylists, they direct people, and we, we encourage all employees to park as far back as you possibly can.
Right.
Now, will this hurt you in the event you get another tenant that wants a restaurant in there and then you're? Now, will this hurt you in the event you get another tenant that wants a restaurant in there and then you're back to?
I don't think we could handle another restaurant. This would be, I mean, if.
Because now you're taking the parking away and then you'll come back to us and say, I'm back again.
Well, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think we could provide the parking. I wouldn't, because again, it only hurts me because every tenant is, you know, has signed a lease. The lease requires me to provide parking for them and I just, we've never gotten even close to using this lot at full capacity.
I have some questions about the traffic flow in and out because like Ashley just described, the problem getting in there now to go to All Stars is everyone wants to park at the front. No one thinks about parking in the back.
Right.
And actually, you can get backed up on that Market Street there. You can have people reversing out who want to leave, you want to turn in, and it's a busy road. That's, my concern is if you've got a peak hour, five to seven, of a large traffic volume, so they're not wanting to park, but they want to come in and pick up their dinner order, getting in and flowing through that site seems problematic to me. So could you describe if there is a rear entrance and that's where most people ultimately know they should go because they need to park and get out and go in and pick it up? What is the traffic flow around that particular site going to look like between five and seven P M?
So, a comment, signage clearly be better, great comment. Directing people in, so when we came in for this new parking lot here, we had multiple curb cuts on East Market Street and the township encouraged us to consolidate that into one curb cut right here, kind of across from Rolling Star slash Stumpies. It would make sense for us to direct really almost all of Wonder's people into the back of the lot. And I will talk to Jason and his team about that. But in addition, we also have an access out to Market Street right here. It is an easement to the benefit of these two properties. This is Bang, is there a?
Danny Martin.
Thank you, sir. They've been here a long time in the township. They install speaker system, use audiovisual for buses, police cars, ambulances. And so we literally have an easement here. So again, something that we can coordinate with Wonder and Wonder's customers, put a map on the website. So again, people can come in on Ballmar Street and come in, park here and then leave. Again, anybody coming from this direction, going back to two oh two, West Town, never have to get back on East Market Street. So we can do some more arrows, signage.
Make it all friendlier, make it seem like you're not going into an alley or something, yeah.
And again, we are encouraging all employees to park all the way in the back and delivery people as well.
So is that the only way in and out would be on Ballmar or Market?
Yes, there's a two curb, one, two, three curb cuts on East Market Street to get in and out and one on Ballmar.
Okay.
What is the estimated peak traffic volume, five to seven P M on a Friday, Saturday night? What is the actual volume of car that you estimate coming in?
For just Wonder?
Yeah, for this new, I mean, Stumpies, you have people come, pop, go in, doing that thing. But this has got, to me, I just don't, I don't know the volume of traffic you think you're going to attract on these peak hours.
Yeah, so for your Friday, Saturday night, your principal peak hours, you're probably looking at anywhere and depending on the, for the forecasting here, between fifty and seventy-five orders now for delivery. We match based on order time and proximity to each other. And then for pickup, obviously, those would be.
So fifty to seventy-five per hour or?
Is that pretty consistent with a to-go place, like a pizza place, or people that are delivering food?
I would say so. It's pretty spot on.
Does it kind of sound alarming when you say?
It sounds high, yeah. But if you're gashing and what we've seen is about, depending on the location, anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent of our pre-orders might be patched.
Wawa is probably two and a half extra.
So how many drivers would you have?
So we don't, we don't actually employ any drivers. So whether it's Uber Eats or anything like that, they're independent contractors. We also bought a company called Relay, which handles our courier operations. We do the same thing. We have independent contractors, but we have a unique way of mitigating against what you're talking about. Totally cognizant of the fact that there's influx of courier drivers across all these towns because of the changed environment that we live in. And what Relay does without the platform is we vet our couriers first of all. But then every restaurant that we have for any half an hour block will have a set number of reservation slots for couriers. And we do that based on forecasting so that we don't, we are able to mitigate having too many couriers on-site. And so those have to be booked by couriers that are already in our system. And that's how we balance that and it changes daily based on whatever forecast is for that given day.
And Sean, you should note that about half the centers is literally almost empty during those hours. And Rolling Star is closed and the salon use is, you know, very low traffic in those evening hours.
Yeah, the actual parking variance is not bothering me really at all. I just let the zoning hearing board, in my opinion, deal with whether that's an issue or not. My concern is that there's going to be no traffic study around what the issues are in this particular new use that's being created. We don't have any land development process or whatever to go through. So I just can't visualize and understand what the traffic impact might be of this new use at the peak hours. And I don't see how, just if the zoning hearing board grants you these two variances you're asking for, it's kind of, there's no other assessment done. Is that right, Chris? There's just no? So that's my concern really is, I just don't think we have, I don't have enough information to know whether this.
Why would it be any different than a full-service restaurant that provides, that has the same or greater impact? Why would it be any different than that?
Because a full-service restaurant, maybe it's eighty percent of people come in and sit down for two hours and the parking's the issue for a full-service restaurant. For something that's, the whole model is kiosk self-service, that is a different concept. And it's not that the traffic flow in that particular parcel is not great, in my opinion. So a huge increase in volume at peak rush hour on Market Street sounds problematic.
Well, we'll let the zoning.
Yeah, there's a word missing, condition on this, over making.
My concern for the board is, does the zoning hearing board think that way or not? Are they just going to look specifically at the variances that are being requested and address only those particular requests? They're not necessarily applied, we need to do a traffic study on, correct or not?
That's correct. There wouldn't be a traffic study performed for this because you're substituting one user for another. If there was adequate parking available for a six thousand square foot restaurant, even if they, even if it was entirely devoted to pickup and they had three thousand trips coming to this location, there would be no parking or traffic evaluation.
That's really what my point was.
Yeah, it's not, it's just a matter of procedure. You don't ordinarily evaluate traffic for this. I think the arguments that the applicant's raising here about the practicalities of what other stores are in the center, how those are used, that's why we have a zoning hearing board. They sort that stuff out, obtain the specifics on it.
Would it be comparable, and don't take this in any sort of way, but would it be comparable of like a Pizza Hut going in? Like, you know, their peak hours are maybe dinnertime and they're doing a lot of pizza deliveries or will it be?
In terms of their volume, I'm sure it's probably comparable.
Right.
In terms of the quality.
Right, yeah. I'm not riding on pizza delivery line of pizza. Okay, I just wanted to.
Now, from a legal perspective, would it be allowable to grant a variance based on a traffic study?
So there's no requirement that an applicant submit a traffic study for this type of area. Really what they're asking for is to provide fewer parking spaces because I think, as Eli said, the restaurant component of what they're proposing is relatively small. So they're saying that the parking requirement for that component is appropriate for that component, but for the remainder of the facility, it's not. That's the argument they're making in the zoning.
I understand the argument. I'm just wondering if we could put conditions on a.
There wouldn't be practically, there wouldn't be a good way for anyone to evaluate the parking study after it's been performed. So if the zoning hearing board would propose that as a condition, there wouldn't be a step in the process where it's evaluated after they render their decision. The zoning hearing board would just decide whether this proposed use, you know, if it represents a potential danger to the public, that's where that consideration should come in. But there's no requirement that the applicant provide that analysis in the process.
And as Eric stated, if they were going, if they didn't need the relief in which to get less parking for by far zoning ordinance, there would be no mechanism for the township that has to perform a traffic study because it would essentially be a kind of space that applicants would just go through our building permit process. You would have to, the board would have absolutely no say over it.
Just one last question. Do we know, was there a variance for parking required when Stumpies was in the location? Or was it just the cross-parcels easement?
We did, Stumpies was the impetus to create the shared parking.
It meant the requirements that we had for these Stumpies was classified as?
It was not a restaurant.
Not that, you should also note that probably one of the busiest Wawa's in the entire Wawa chain is directly across the street, generating an ungodly amount of rush hour traffic in and out all the time. And quite frankly, it's why people want to be here because, you know, it's this stretch here between, you know, as you come out of Westchester, there's a fair number of restaurants that are very attractive to your residents and the borough residents.
Okay. Yeah, so we're going to.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody from the I N S any questions or comments on?
I'm just wondering how many chefs you'll have in there at one time and where they will park their clothes?
So in terms of employees during peak, we have about thirteen employees.
They'll park in the back of it.
Yeah, they will park at the back. They'll be direct.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'll chair this application before the zoning board, we're on November twenty eighth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having a nice day. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is the discussion of possible approval of a proposal from Iwork. Iwork Systems for fleet management software. Mr. Bator, do you want to introduce this?
Ma'am, sure. Of course, I want to thank John for sitting through the last two hours. Thank you for being here. And he's done, I'll give a quick summary, but most of the work has been done by John. He did all the due diligence, all the research, and he was able to get us a cost savings on this. So before the board this evening is a proposal from Iwork Systems for fleet management software for the Public Works Department. The purpose of the software was discussed at the September seventeenth board meeting during the review of the updated ten-year capital plan for the township. During that discussion, the budgeted cost was eleven thousand dollars. However, John worked with Iwork and was able to reduce the price by forty-four hundred dollars. If it's approved by the end of November, please be advised that the township would not be built until January twenty twenty-five and the annual software cost going forward would be sixty-six hundred dollars. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the township solicitor and they've addressed all of her comments.
That's excellent.
So we would, if approved by the board, we would sign the contract. John will get it back to his contact at Iwork and we would then be built in January, so it corresponds with the budget.
Any questions for the board?
I would say, go ahead, John.
Question, what were the solicitor's comments? I would see any.
The only two, I don't want to speak for, sorry, corrective of my wrong, but the only two comments were related to the venue for disputes which they have removed, which in speaking with Kristen would then default to Chester County. And then the other one was she just asked about the term of the agreement, which is three years, which, but as I talked to Kristen about, is generally consistent with our software contracts. Sorry, did you get stuck?
Nope, you got it.
I have a question regarding the contract itself where it talks about customer data. It's indicating that off-site backups are going to be done twice a week. Is that enough, you think, John? Or you think daily? Because they're offering twice a week, so if that's the case, would that mean we'd have to pay extra for something more often than that?
Those are just the backups, like everything, everything's going to be.
Hard drive.
Yeah, it's going to be in there. Those are just like, the backups to make sure that you don't lose it. But so I don't see why.
We back up our system daily.
Daily?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked that question. Because you could lose some data potentially.
No, I'm saying we back up our system daily, so it'll benefit us.
I see what you're saying. I don't know. I want to leave it up to you. I just asked a question.
We back up our system, is it going to back up the, this system as well, the daily backup? You're talking about a remote backup that's done twice a week somewhere else, John? Is that what it is?
That's exactly what it is, somewhere. It's a secondary backup.
So we're hosting this software on our system?
It's web-based.
It's a web-based software.
Okay, so we won't, you won't be backing it up here then?
You can pull the data down from the cloud, if that's what you do, backup and unfamiliar.
I don't think it's a big issue because like twice a week, what are you going to be using it for? You don't lose that much data, really, right? Two days with the data there?
Well, we'll be using it every day because we work on stuff every day. So it will be daily that we're using it. But for the backup, I'm not really overly concerned in two weeks. Because it's not like we're going to, I don't foresee it like losing that data.
Right.
And John, I'm going to assume you're going to involve Josh in this transition, so he'll be involved.
Yeah, whatever Josh recommends, I guess, for that, if he's going to be involved in this process.
Yes.
Anyway, great job, John.
So I have a couple of questions, all right. So for a company that comes and say, hey, if you sign now, we'll give you a discount, it usually means they need to book a sale in this calendar year to meet some targets, which usually means that they've got a little bit of financial pressures on them, probably a small company. In terms of the termination issues and the fact that we have to pay to get our own data, I don't like that because again, it is an issue with an ongoing concern or somebody buys them out. I don't, there's some clauses in here that kind of bother me a little bit.
Which one, Sean?
During the term of the agreement, the customer may request a copy of all the cost of our data, which we provided to us at no more than twenty-five hundred dollars a copy. I don't like that. That just sounds like, hey, you want some hard copy or you want something or thumb drive with some information on or whatever your purpose is. It's twenty-five hundred dollars to get it. It's just, it's not a good case to accept.
Why would we need to, a copy of all our own data if we're backing, if we have all our data?
But we don't have it. They have our data.
So that's the final question is how accessible is the data on a day-to-day basis?
Easy.
Right, to the extent that, here's why you might need it. If someone submits a right-to-know request that says, please give me all of the service records for these vehicles from this date to that date, going in and pulling that report from the system may be easy. If someone submits a right-to-know request and says, give me all of the records for all vehicle maintenance in the township for the passing of the years, it may on net be cheaper to ask them to produce it in terms of staff time, ask them to produce the data this way than to incur the staff time to go through manually and pull that information from the system, through the direct user interface that John would access every day to day, right? I don't know, I'm not familiar with the system. I don't know how easy it is to access day to day. I don't have that level of understanding of how the system works to know whether it's appropriate to grab kind of this en masse backup at twenty-five hundred dollars a pop. Or if there's some for less number, right? Can I get, can I get ten records for a hundred bucks? You know, some intermediate level of service that they can provide.
We use, we use Iwork for permit management software in Melbourne. We brought them in twenty eighteen. We never had an issue with them. When we pulled data, monthly reports all the time.
I copy the, I guess I'll say the second paragraph, this section four under customer data. Does customer control exports and export data from Iwork application at any time?
You can export it as a, I believe it exports it in Excel.
By comparison, another sort of system that works similarly is like the county's G I S system. You can go and get as much data as you can through the front end of the system, but if you wanted to get all of the parcel data for the county, you would have to call the G I S department and pay a comparable amount of money, maybe more. the GIS department and pay a comparable amount of money, maybe more in fact, to get all of that data delivered as a chunk, basically. And that seemed to be what this provision provides for, is that we get all of our data at once as a chunk, there's a fee for that.
Hey, John, just curious, this, this software will provide the following, you're doing freight work orders, parts inventories, schedule maintenance, fuel resources, management reports, correct?
Yes, it will.
What do you, what do you use now to do all that stuff?
Right now, I track our work orders through paper, so everything I go to. Anytime I get road departments, vehicles, police vehicles, it's just they mileage tracked all through a piece of paper.
So you just keep paper piles and all that stuff?
Thanks.
So you see this as a, something would increase your productivity, you think, you will be able to do all these things?
I think it's going to help, when I get asked like questions through the replacement process of our, like our capital, it'll help me have a better answer of how much that vehicle's cost it over the life span. So, with that being said, we could also see what vehicles might need to be replaced sooner, or what vehicles could be kept longer, so that's kind of, uh, reason.
So a useful tool then, which you.
Oh, absolutely.
And I guess the support and services fees can increase up to five percent per year, is that pretty typical of what we would pay for service fees, at that high per year increase?
So I think that's just in there, they did comment on that, they say normally, once you sign on, there is no increase, but that's.
But that's all for all, this is in writing, it's a contract.
They have that in there, so they, it's, what they've explained to me is that's more so they have the chance that they are able to increase it, but most of the time they do not increase for the, I don't know, Chris said he used the software before, I don't know if that.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall, but.
Yeah, they.
Seems like a substantial increase each year, but I guess at the end of the year you can get rid of them if it's, gets up higher.
It's only, it's only five.
Five percent on sixty-six hundred dollars, so we're not breaking the bank?
So paying increases at five percent, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Ari, I've got a question for you on the, I'm still stuck on termination here, so.
Okay.
On the second paragraph, upon termination of this agreement, Iwork will discontinue all applications and annual services. They will provide the customer with an electronic copy of all the customer's data, comma, if requested by the customer within three to five business days. So is that, they'll provide it within three to five business days, or if we terminate it, we've got three to five business days to ask for the data?
So I, I would interpret that as they will provide it within three to five business days. I, I think that it's a fair ambiguity, ambiguity in that sentence, but I read that as they will be, it will provide it if requested by the customer. I would still recommend that we request it within three to five business days after terminating the contract, though.
Okay.
Or can we take out that language altogether and just end it with customer's data?
Well, I think ambiguity favors the party that didn't draft the contract.
You know what we'll do? Why don't, why don't we propose to remove that parenthetical statement to, before the comma above it?
Yes, you said, take out.
Subject to that requirement, we will make that change and send it back to them as per.
End it with an electronic copy of the customer's data, period.
Well, and with electronic copy of all customer's data within three to five business days, comma, if requested by the customer. That way, it's clear who, that they must perform within thirty, three to five day business days. I, I do think it's reasonable, I would expect that they're going to say, well, okay, but you got to have some reasonable amount of time to request it.
Make it ten days.
Yeah, great.
It's not the time per se, it's the fact that we don't ask for it, we don't get it.
Exactly.
That's important. That's wrong, change the law.
Okay.
All right, so any other comments by the board on this contract? Somebody want to make a motion then to?
Is, is it a question that we answer?
Uh, the motion. After motion, yeah.
All right, through, okay.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this proposal with that change of the three to five business days that Ari just outlined?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, yes.
So is, you've been doing the paper before, familiar with the staffing systems, I'm a little bit concerned about subscription-based, cloud-stored systems, because you're somewhat held to a certain extent to, a victim to the system. So, at sixty-six hundred dollars per year, give up increases or not, I assume you expect to try to use this for a number of years. Going from a paper system to partly probably a pretty sophisticated system, is there somewhere in between where you could create or own your own software-based systems and be not the victim of their changes and the likes? It's, you know, it sounds like you create the database management system, if you track and equipment, the type of things that are done and so forth. I suspect systems like this tend to be very all-encompassing, and they try to be everything to everyone, and they're a lot more sophisticated and consequently more expensive than the average thing is there. Has anyone looked into the possibility of finding something purchase, purchasable and supportable, or just creating a simple database within, I'm not sure what's goes within the township?
This, this subscription-based model for software is pretty common, I mean, I know we do that with our financials software, we do it with Office three sixty-five, this program, we can give Munologic, our permit software that we're currently using right now is all subscription-based, I mean, that's just.
Oh, it's the move of the industry, because it's a way to make more money, I completely understand that, you have to, you can't own your office, you can't own your office software anywhere to get Office three sixty-five unless you have a back door. So the point is that, you know, ten years from now, it's sixty-six thousand dollars plus five percent of a five percent, and it's a large chunk of money that when somebody can create a database, if it's just a simplified one, that would be custom specifically to John, and not a larger, grander piece of software that's, you know, it's an end-all to everybody. Might be system that might be more usable and a lot more cost-effective, and yes, I'm familiar with that, everything's subscription-based, I mean, many things are.
I think, I think John, I think John has done his due diligence on this, this is something he's been working on all year.
Well, I'm sort of finding new software, I can understand.
I'm comfortable recommending to the board what John has brought forward, I, he's been working on this all year.
Well, it's a reasonable point, so my answer would be, we're going to get this huge step change from pieces of paper, John's record desk, you know, piled up with stuff to use your system, so after three to five years, if we're not seeing any new benefit on it, as long as we can get a dataset that is transportable to another system, we could RFP it if we wanted to. So if, if someone else comes along with, we can do this for three thousand dollars a year, just give us a dataset that's in an Excel format or whatever format.
That's something.
That's where you, that's where you address the not getting locked in forever with someone.
What's the contractual out of this contract?
One year.
One year? Okay.
I think it's thirty-six months.
Yeah, I draw this. Do you think like this?
One-year term.
One-year term?
Uh, no, that's prior to the expiration of the one-year term, then after the one-year term, either party can terminate, pardon me?
I mean, when, since.
Yeah, it's yearly, it is yearly, it's sixty days notice prior to the.
Okay.
Prior to the anniversary of the second date.
I've worked in large corporations where, you know, maintenance functions are just like this, and sometimes it's, these systems can be too over well, you don't really get the benefits out of it, so after one year, that's, that's fine, we can chat about it in the year.
It's like when I get a new iPhone, I can't use all the bells on it, it's way more than I'll ever figure out, so, but it does what I need, and we're going to get a step change with, I hope, with what John's.
And it's, I, I'd use.
My biggest concern is more the dataset they give you is not usable by the competitive company, they're going to say, we can't load that in, it's stuck with, with your history on paper, and you have to move, put, you know, all the components back in, that is the biggest risk with it, but again, I don't think it's a, they can issue dollar-wise, so.
Is it then worth at least confirming that there is a usable format of a data dump that's, you know, Excel spreadsheet, comma separated, you know, something along those lines that is transferable to other platforms so that you're not locked in?
I'm sure we can confirm that.
That would probably.
We're going to have, we'll have to get in and use that, I mean, I, I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, you ask them, how do you transmit the data to, can I download it to an Excel file?
Well, I think, well, I don't know about Excel, I know that for this contract, you can download the data, right?
Correct, yes.
I don't know what format that would be, but we, we do have the ability to download the data anytime.
Right, so I'm saying like if you use, say, an email program, right, you can down, you can, you can store the files, but reality is you need the program to read the, in, in the, normally.
It exports, it exports based on CSV, so that.
Okay, that's fine, then, then that means you can transport it to something else, okay? Then, then it's low-risk.
It exports if you are tracking uploads based on CSV, which is the exact, which is the exact same system the county uses.
Any other questions on this motion from the public? Hearing none, okay, we'll vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number seven, which is the discussion regarding consideration to incorporate bicycle facilities as part of PennDOT's repaving of Phoenixville Pike in twenty twenty-five. Mr. Bajer?
So Madam Chair, before the board this evening is consideration to request that Pennsylvania Department of Transportation incorporate bicycle-friendly facilities into the repaving of Phoenixville Pike. The area of Phoenixville Pike that would be, that would be included is from Saunders Lane slash Arum Avenue to Green Hill Road slash old Green Hill Road. Please be advised that the remainder of North Green Hill Road, based on this, based on the evaluation that was done by DVRPC and the County Planning Commission, does not have adequate pavement with bicycle facilities. This would be a component of PennDOT Connect slash DVRPC's Complete Streets Resurfacing Program, which enables municipalities to request bicycle facilities to be installed by PennDOT as part of regularly scheduled roadway resurfacing projects. So the township was contacted by the Chester County Planning Commission regarding this possibility. If the board does desire to proceed forward with this, the township would need to issue a letter, a form letter that's been attached, as, and I also provided an FAQ section on this program. I did review this with the Township Street Superintendent Mark Burlommi, and Mr. Burlommi noted the following, because the township would have to maintain these facilities once they're installed, I asked Mark if they could maintain them, he said that they could, however, for safety reasons, any maintenance should be performed on a weekend when the traffic volume is low. He noted that work zones would most likely need to be set up for certain maintenance to be performed, and the topography of the area is challenging due to turns and hills. Additionally, based on his review, Mark did note opposition to this installation, as he believes it may create a dangerous situation for bike bicyclists without a true buffer. Additional concerns that he noted included the topography and aggressive driving, in addition to Mr. Burlommi, and did speak with Sergeant Greiser in the Traffic Safety Division of the Western Police Department, and Sergeant Greiser did agree with the assessment and does not support this installation, so, but it is ultimately a policy decision for the board.
Okay, so this is essentially like bicycle lanes?
Correct.
And our responsibility, our maintenance, would be repainting the markings if we were to pave it, or just keep them visible, and the signage?
Correct.
On the side road, and this is the stretch between Arum Avenue and Green Hill, like right up near the Wawa?
Uh, yes.
Right?
No, 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 no.
Other, other end.
From Arum up to here.
Yeah, yeah, and then, so the Chester County Planning Commission contacted us wanting this?
They contacted us as part of the Complete Streets Program from PennDOT, so I was contacted by Stephen Buck from the Chester County Planning Commission, asking if it was something that the township would be interested in. I told them that we have to go through the board, and that it would have to be, I wanted to review it with our police department and with our Public Works Department.
And why this area?
Because PennDOT is repaving the section of Phoenixville Pike next year, so when they go through and they repaint the section of it, they contact the municipality and see if they want these facilities installed. PennDOT will install the facilities, and then the municipality takes over the future maintenance of them.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, West Coast County Township's going to be responsible for removing debris from the bike lane and showers as needed. There could be a day we don't monitor that, and there's big debris on it, and then who's responsible from a legal perspective if somebody gets hurt because there was a piece of equipment in, in the bike lane that we didn't remove? And I guess the second piece of that is PennDOT's going to remove the snow and perform other routine maintenance such as sweeping, vegetation, trimming in accordance with normal operations. Well, I know there's a lot of potholes that PennDOT doesn't handle now, I can't imagine them doing, removing ice from a bike lane and various other things, those are my two main concerns, you know, from a legal perspective with us, on our part, we're supposed to do, not that, you know.
Just to address your question about liability, you would only have liability if you were aware of the condition, a dangerous condition on the roadway, so if you were not aware of it, then you wouldn't be, but if you were aware of it, you would take care of it. So, so from a liability perspective, that's probably not a significant consideration, the safety consideration that Chris raised earlier is, is more, it's in the same vein, but it's a more serious consideration because of that liability protection.
What if you were aware of it, but it took us five or two weeks to get out there to clean the debris off?
That would be too long, that would be too long.
That would be.
You would be subject to liability in that situation.
Right, or a couple days even, if somebody gets hurt in the interim, you're going to know of that, or a day.
That's right. That's right, it's the same as any other sidewalk.
Well, exactly, so it's kind of like any park sidewalk, right, I mean, we're not out there every day inspecting every piece of cement, right? If we become aware of an issue, we take immediate action to repair it.
It would most likely be complaint-based, so if we hear about an issue, we address it. To your, to your example about like potholes, we report those to the Chester County Maintenance Office with PennDOT, and then they're responsible for maintaining them, so as long as there's a record that we reported it, I think that would.
Yeah, that piece I'm okay with, I'm not, I'm not okay with PennDOT coming out and doing their portion on these bike trams either, just knowing how they operate, the potholes will.
No, but if there's a pothole within the bike.
We're not responsible.
We're not responsible for that, and therefore we don't have liability if those bikers bike down.
Right, then about the pothole, I'm just concerned about PennDOT coming out to remove snow and do maintenance such as sweeping, vegetation, trimming.
But they do that anyway, don't they?
Yeah, they just know.
They're, they're required to, I, I think.
How responsible are they, is my.
Right, I don't mean to put words in, about here, but the question is whether they, whether they will actually do it.
Yeah.
That's a different question.
My, my point was an analogy saying they're not good repairing potholes, which causes damage, and that's more important than something like this.
I, I, I'm, I'm a cyclist, and I'm totally opposed to this. This is not a safe section of road, of bike lane, and see how the photo shows a nice straight suburban street? This is a busy road with twists and turns and uphill, and the way the traffic wanders around those lanes, you will not be safe in a bike lane, it gives a false impression that that's a safe road, lane to be in, and it's not. And of course, if it's a lane, people, the drivers think you should be over in that lane, so if you're outside the lane, they drive more aggressively. So I totally support what Mark and Sergeant Greiser said, and I do not support this at all.
I don't either, I'm supported either.
I totally agree with Sean, as I travel that road almost on a daily basis, it, it would not work, people would just go way too fast on that road, and there are too many turns.
There you have it.
So we're just, if I can, motion to deny, what do we?
I, do we even?
I mean, official action would be a bad idea.
Well, I'll make the motion then, I'll make the motion to decline the opportunity to put a bike lane on Phoenixville Pike between those two intersections.
I'll say it.
All right, is there any public comment on the motion? Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, most of the road, it looks like there's already a bike lane, it's just not marked, something?
There's a shoulder.
Certain shoulders are so bad.
So are bicyclists, though, already?
Right, I don't know.
I've never seen a bicyclist on that road, it's way too dangerous, I would never go with my back on that part of the road.
I'm just thinking with Greiser on the parking lot, right there on Green Hill, and access to the bike trails that, if, in the future, you might see bicyclists.
Yeah, most think of Army Hill, people bring their bikes to the parking lot and start from the parking lot, you don't see them cycling down three twenty-two to get to Army Hill.
Yeah, that's fine.
For what it's worth, I totally agree with Mark and Sergeant Greiser.
Yes, I do too, I'm totally.
I was shocked when.
I mean, there is a place, I think, for bike lanes somewhere in the future, I don't I mean, there is a place I think for bike lanes somewhere in the future, I don't want to discard like, you know, but maybe this, this isn't the spot.
All right, so Madam Chair, there was a motion in a second.
Yes. Any other public comment?
I'm just confused because it says, I know it's part of our comprehensive plan, right?
Bikes friendly, I, yes, and like I said, I think that we generally are very supportive of, of that, but maybe just this exact location doesn't make sense.
No, there's actually, to this word's point, there's actually in your comprehensive plan, this area marked off for bicycle lanes in the comprehensive plan. However, when you go through that planning process, I don't think it's fully vetted out and analyzed, which is kind of put in there as sort of like a.
Good idea.
Good idea kind of thing, and I think once you do the analysis of it, you sort of realize a lot of the points that were raised this evening.
All right, so there's a motion in a second. All in favor of denying, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to item number eight, which is the discussion of possible approval of the 2024 Senior Citizen Trash and Sewer Rebate Program. So in front of us here is the list of eligible residents to receive the 2025, 2024 rebates. Um, does the board have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, on the bottom of the second page, there are two individuals that one eighteen Glen Avenue, and I'm just wondering why one, uh, why there are two rebates for one address?
Do you have a question?
That is a good, I can look in.
Or any other, I don't see any others.
That was the only one I saw.
I could have just gone and typed out.
Maybe also there's one over Carol's shop on the, second, the last page, it's just a PO box. What address is that for? Fifty-two, two L, still not.
We probably could be answered that. Good catch, maybe. Is somebody willing to make a motion to approve? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any public comments on the motion or questions? No, but hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, the motion carries five to zero.
Just a quick comment, uh, Mr. Becher, do we advertise this on our website or the newsletter and so forth? I think it's a great program.
Yes.
And I'm glad to see these many folks in the township, but they manage it, but there may be others.
We do advertise it, and if people also qualify, you may notice like throughout the year, if they qualify, like later on, they get an application in and meet the criteria that's outlined, they can be eligible for a rebate too, and that's done as a manual bill.
Moving on to item number nine, which is the discussion of possible approval of the 2025 Service Proposal from Danny Lines Digital LLC. Mr. Becher.
Let me just pull that up real quick, Madam Chair. So Madam Chair, before the board this evening is the 2025 Service Proposal from Danny Lines Digital LLC. The current rate for their services is thirty-three hundred dollars a month. Uh, generally speaking, the proposal covers the same scope of work as is currently provided. However, the company is adding a software platform called ZenCity to their services. Uh, speaking with Danny Lines Digital, the software will provide more transparency in the work they're doing at various sites, and will also provide further analysis on what individuals are saying on various social media, newspaper, websites, as well as next, to give us access to the next door. Um, I did speak with the owner of the company today, um, as it relates to ZenCity. The township will actually own that software as part of this, so if, for example, if we were to choose not to contract with Danny Lines Digital, we will own that software. We'll be able to walk in, see all the activity that they're doing, and we will retain ownership of that. Um, but it is part of their business platform that they're migrating all of their clients to in 2025.
But it's a subscription.
It's a subscription.
So we would own a subscription.
Correct. Um, and then the other aspect of it is, um, the other aspect to consider of it is the price. We can either pay the rate of thirty-five hundred dollars per month, uh, with a fifty-three hundred dollar lump sum payment due in January, or space it out over the course of a year for, for monthly, which would be three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars per month. So those are the options.
But in terms of the options, the option two makes the most sense.
I, I would, I would agree.
You could earn five percent a month on the fifty-three hundred dollars lump sum, but otherwise, option two is way to go then.
What's our budget on this?
What do you mean what's our budget?
I mean, how much do we put aside to pay for something like this?
I mean, right now, we're paying thirty-three hundred dollars a month.
What's Christine put in the budget?
Has she, no, she is not, so this would be included in file.
It's not, it's, she's talking about the thirty-five hundred at the moment.
Correct. So right now, we're paying the, like, just under forty thousand dollars.
So just a question, so if we own the ZenCity subscription, don't we need the same kind of language agreement contract with them that we've just kind of thought through about these, like, this other provider on the maintenance software for the vehicles? I, I understand how we would own it if we're not actually in an agreement with ZenCity.
I haven't seen the agreement from ZenCity.
Yeah, so I, that's, that's a gray area to me.
We can look at it. So it says here for 2025, all our, all our clients will be migrating to the ZenCity Municipal Engagement Software, which will be owned by West Ocean Township. Danny Lines Digital will act as the main admin on the software, will post the social media websites with up to two township representatives of your choice, the software, and then it explains what the software does. We can look into whatever agreement there is.
Yeah, I think that's loose end. I mean, personally, I think we should get the answer to that and understand if we need a sep, if there is a separate agreement needed with ZenCity, and just, you know, assuming the board's amenable to option two, you can let Linda know that that's the direction we're going, but we need more information before we approve it. That's my opinion.
Well, is there still an option to not have the ZenCity?
No, this is part of their business model. I talked to Linda about that today.
So what exactly will ZenCity add to what we have now? It says here provide further analysis on what individuals are saying on social media, newspapers, and next door. Uh, how exactly will they do it? Give us a month of this?
Yep, we can have access to further reports, more analytics, we can do surveys through it, and we can do more additional monitoring.
Are we here to hear with Danny Lines Digital?
Yes.
Would we ever consider going out for bids under commenting?
I think we did bid a couple, three, two or three years ago.
Not since I've been here. We've been with them since I've been here.
Would it be advantageous?
I think it might be.
So that we can have the option to also leave out ZenCity and not have to get it for fifty-three hundred dollars a year?
I think it would, I think it would be prudent to fit it out.
I don't like a company saying you've got to get the service.
I agree with this.
Or you don't fit the contract.
Yeah.
I just don't like it. And I'm not a fan of that.
We always had to do the work, yeah.
What am I, what are we going to do for, while we bid that out? Because let's say we put it out to bid, and then we're into January, February, like, are we not going to do our, they do our monthly newsletter for us, they do our quarterly newsletter for us.
I know, but anytime we would ever have to go out to bid, we'd be in that situation, right?
Yeah, so.
But our current, our current contract ends at the end of this year.
Can we do a month-to-month with, with them if they're agreeable to that with Danny Lines Digital? Until we can get our bids back?
I hear you, I can support what Chris is saying. To me, if we're going to do an IRP, we should start it back in the summer timeframe, so that by the end of the year, we know which direction we want to go in. We're too late to do it for this cycle and maintain the quality we have.
Introducing this at, at the eleventh hour.
Yeah, but exactly.
It's a substantial change to the material of the contract, in my opinion.
Fifty-three hundred dollars is a lot of money, and I'm not a fan of ZenCity software either, at all.
Well, I would direct Chris to go back and say, well, if the board's not happy about it, can you give us a break on the first year price? And what can you do to help us? We know, we know the board's uncomfortable with the proposal, and we want to, you know, see what you can do to make it a better proposal for us.
Um, let me ask Ms. Smith, uh, Ms. Smith, what you say that you're uncomfortable with ZenCity software, what are you basing your uncomfortableness on?
Um, basically, I don't think that the, the data is accurate. It basically, it's a web that calls and collects comments and stories it finds on the internet, um, like Nextdoor. That stuff is, I don't know what it is, but is it bad information on Facebook? And presents the townships with trends and what the residents are saying. Um, I think there's a lot of negativity on media. I'm not sure that that's going to do us anything.
But there are.
Survey would certainly be better if we want to do that, maybe on, on monkey survey or, um, something else. I'm just not sure that it's good stats it's even giving us. That's my opinion. I, I don't think I want to know social media, I don't, I don't want to know anyway. So would I get it?
I hear what you guys are saying. I think that Sean, I think you have a point. You know, maybe this is something we focus on for this year. We put it out, you know, in the summer with a little bit of advanced notice and opportunity. Um, but I also think that it is worth talking to them.
Yeah, see if they give us a break. You know, they're kind of forcing us to shove this down our throat here.
Yeah, the last.
I don't know, you know, and I'm not even sure what we're going to get for this additional.
Fifty-three hundred.
Yeah, fifty-three hundred dollars, so see if they give us a break, one of them, aye, aye, we're going to just do an IRP in the whole year.
Yeah. I will say too.
For next year.
You know, they had some issues with our social media, that we were not given that service fully over the past couple of, I don't know how long that period lasted, but maybe they can work with us.
I can speak with Linda about that.
So.
That might be a good question.
Yes.
I just want to say, I think it was 2018, I just did a quick search, and I'm going to say it's either twenty-two or twenty-four hundred dollars a month, and it just seems like it's, has increased quite a bit. And so if we did initiate it, it says in 2018, West Ocean Township recognized the need to enhance communications. Anyway, so it's been five or six years, so it is time to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Were we should have been with the, the new website, the developer?
Yes, with Derek.
That was different.
That was the website, though, well, right, but.
That's on Pacific Plus.
That's Pacific Plus, right. Um, okay, so then.
We'll move on to the next meeting, is that what we need?
Well, yeah, I can go back and talk to, and talk to Linda about that.
But we'll have this for our next meeting, I don't know. Moving on to item number ten, which is the reports for the month of October 2024. Chief Carroll, thank you.
Thank you. So the report from the Police Department for October 2024, we responded to two thousand three hundred and forty-six calls for service. Fifty-two of those were alarms, and three of those alarms are bound to be valid. One hundred and ten accidents, twenty-eight of which were reportable, and we drove a total of sixteen thousand and fifty-six miles. We performed extra traffic enforcement on Haley Lake Snyder Avenue Airport Road, Newark New Street, West Town Road, Chrisina, Chrisina Lane, Falcon Lane, South High Street, and South Bible Street. Our officers performed their normal monthly training. In addition to that, our department completed their required control tactics training, our annual TASER recertification training for everyone. Lieutenant Cotter is and has been the FBI National Academy since September, or it'll be coming up first week in December. Officer Hoover completed his crisis intervention training. Sergeant Greiser went to the State Police Recon Seminar on some traffic accidents in construction. Sergeant Greiser, Officer Ashop, to Vigerio attended electronic citation filing. That's in accordance with the new reporting system we're getting, hopefully, we're getting, we're, we're in the process of updating it, or upfitting it, and hopefully go to it early next year. Officer Greider completed a patrol legal survival course. Detective Torres attended the Delaware State Police Homicide Conference. Myself and Captain D'Amidio attended the International Association Chiefs Police Conference. Sergeant Spigarelli attended FBI Leader Training, which is a leadership training school. Officer DeLeona and Officer Needham attended Field Force Training. Um, Cindy and Jess and both dispatchers attended the Township Sexual Harassment Training. Sergeant Gilbert, Officer Mango, Officer Story, and Officer Vigilio all attended Brain Instructor Training, that's in-house training. And Officer Vigilio also attended a fraudulent documents course. Um, going back to the alarms. Nine of those were at the highest billed fine rate, either the sixty-seven violation of the year, and twenty of those were first offense of the year. We performed twenty-seven assists to other departments and spent a total of just under thirty hours, and we received thirty-four assists from other departments. So that's the report for the month. Madam Chair, any questions?
I have a question, Chief Carroll. Um, patrol legal survival, what kind of training is that? With all due respect to any lawyers around.
Absolutely, it's, it's like case law training, um, what they're finding, liability-wise cases, both still going through.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
And our monthly, Liza, who, Team Maria Smith, and I, can you give us some updated on the MOT E and how it's being utilized for patrol and other uses, what you're assessing on it this time?
So it's primarily been used in the June mail unit, however, we're seeing that it gets used in patrol so we can assess its value as a patrol vehicle. And it's only been doing that for a month, but what we're finding is the advertised or expected mileage on the battery doesn't come close to what the actual mileage traveled is, and it depends on a lot of factors. Temperature's been a bigger one, a, a big factor. The coldest day it was run, I think, was forty-seven or forty-nine degrees, but I think they drove it forty miles and it took a hundred and thirty off of that. So differences can be really wide ranging. So at least, and that's, that's a small window, it's only a month, but what I'm seeing is we could never use it back-to-back, which is what we need out of patrol car.
And that's with a level? That's on level two charger.
That's not considering the charger, that's just what we're finding driving.
Yeah, okay, but if we had a level three, then we would be able to charge it faster, we could at least get one shift out of it versus two, or worse is none right now.
So I wouldn't say we couldn't, we couldn't get none of it, I think we could use it for one shift, but that's not what our patrol cars do, unless you want to buy cars. I mean, we can buy more cars, but we often use them back-to-back.
Well, it's just the time it takes to charge a vehicle with a level two charger, it takes what, twenty-four miles or twenty-five miles per hour, as opposed to, when a hundred miles took twenty minutes, you have a level three charger. So a level three charger may make the vehicle more.
Accessible.
Useful for, for patrol vehicles.
Right, but not with a level two.
Yeah, you would have to have a level three charger.
So the only asterisk I brought in that is you'd have to have time to come and charge it. In the patrol world, you just don't know if you have time.
What about the size? I mean, I know you were concerned about the size of the vehicle too, has that been a handicap?
That's the biggest complaint about the car. Everybody likes the car, but most people say it's too small, and the bigger officers just don't like it.
So there's issues there, but you're still checking it out?
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Chief Carroll? How about any questions from public?
No, but if you end up going level three, you'll shorten the battery life as well, remember that. If you do end up taking everything you got, it's going to be these kind of.
Thank you so much. Carrie, you can keep off.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here.
I just wanted to comment regarding five hundred Rose Dale Avenue. In September, we had eight alarms, in October, we had twelve.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, eight to five hundred Rose Dale Avenue.
That's a part of complex.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the chief, but it was Chester now, so they're increasing.
Okay. All right, moving on to item number eleven, which is the Board of Supervisors announcements. I will start to my right with Mr. Walsh, do you have any announcements tonight?
Uh, yeah, there's three things going out, so I attended the Pension Committee meeting. October the twenty-third, I attended the Pension Committee meeting, so this was kind of the first or second, I forget, uh, regular meeting with PNC. As our new financial advisor, the process and the ways of working with them seem pretty settled already. Uh, they can be considered fully established. But a couple of improvements that we intend to work with them on, well, well, related to the transfer of contributions to PNC, and also, um, another, another part of the investment area related to an end contract that might have some opportunity for improvement. So the, that looks good. Um, I met with Christine to review the preliminary budget numbers. I attended the sexual harassment training on November the thirteenth, but on my, the Westchester Area Tag. And this morning, I attended the Silver Rate Project Month meeting, uh, which had good news because, uh, we already have received the interconnect approval from PICO. At the maximum amount we requested, with no design changes, and we also have verbal and permit approvals. So we're in a position now to, um, direct Terrace Alt to place the procurement orders for the equipment that the submittals have been approved for. And there's one last thing they need to do before proceeding with that, which is to work with township staff to determine if we have space to store the pallets of solar panels, because we did agree that we don't want to start the actual construction until mid-March at the earliest. So somewhere between March seventeenth and April first is a construction start date. If we place orders for, uh, the panels here in the next couple of weeks, then they will obviously be delivered well before that, so we need somewhere to store them for a couple of months. So that, uh, open action item, um, project looks good for, um, being installed in the April timeframe. And we also discussed with them the ability to file for the, um, credit that we're going to get on the project. Um, as long as we file by May the fifteenth, they, we went through what kind of information is required to do that, and then the start of physical construction is enough to submit for reimbursement. So all good news today.
Did, did the panels need to be stored indoors?
No.
So we'll probably.
There'll be, there's plenty of space in the.
It'll be fine. Ms. Rob, do you have any?
Sure, Wednesday, October the twenty-third, I also attended the council government's harassment training presented by Dr. Sue Clark. You know, you know, Saturday, October the twenty-sixth, I attended the Islamic Center Chester Candice Fall Barbecue, and also took a tour of the construction of the new mosque. On Wednesday, October the thirtieth, I attended the meeting with township staff and fire and EMS personnel. staff and fire EMS personnel regarding grant opportunities. On Thursday, October, November seventh, I attended the Board of Supervisors Executive Session regarding legal matters. On Friday, November the eighth, myself and I'll have another executive session to discuss personnel issues. On Wednesday, November the thirteenth, I attended the Green Build Expo at the Philadelphia Convention Center, along with Tina Marie Smith and the Alden. The Expo showcased green building technologies and products of U.S. manufacturers. There were attendees from all over the world, and we were given a tour of the exhibits and made several networked contacts. The U.S. Green Building Council, the sponsor of the event, has a policy library which lists and describes municipal codes and ordinances from all across the United States that support sustainability and energy efficiency standards that may be of value as we in the West Coast Township review our zoning work. Now, Thursday, November fourteenth, I attended the catered dinner and awards ceremony. On Friday, November fifteenth, I attended a meeting at the Behavioral Hospital to get an update on progress on providing mental health services to Chester County residents. Tina Marie Smith and I both attended that. Today, November nineteenth, I also attended the monthly meeting updating progress on the solar panel that Sean just reported on. And also, Tina Marie Smith and I attended a meeting with the monthly Board of Supervisors Lysa meeting with our Chief.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I also attended sexual harassment training. Also, on October twenty-eighth, I attended the Chester County Community Foundation Event, which awards scholarships. It was attended by the mayor, William D. Baptiste, Westchester University, and various, various other institutions. November tenth, I attended Empty Folds, which is a food cupboard fundraiser. On November thirteenth, again, I attended the Green Hill International Expo, but what I thought was really interesting is we saw, instead of solar panels, we saw shingles, shingles, solar, shingles, that were actually connected on the roof, which I thought was very interesting, because they did, they did flow a little bit better into the roof. It looked a little more aesthetic. Learned a lot about it, so it was very interesting at that conference. November fourteenth was Cato. Again, on the fifteenth, we met with Jeff Hunt, who's Haven Behavioral, but what's good about that is we will be continued to meet on a quarterly basis. We met with good fellowship, not only John Hellman, but also the Chief of Police of Westchester and the Borough and the University of Pennsylvania. So it was a good group of people to talk about some of the issues and also what behavioral's doing, where they are, what level they're at, various updates. So it was a very informative event. I like the fact that we're keeping the lines of communication open, and we continue to do that quarterly. And then, Carol, and we've been cogitating on the twenty-first. That's it. I conclude my report.
Thanks. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah. On Thursday, October seventeenth, I attended the Fire and EMS Coalition Meeting. Wednesday, October twenty-third, attended the Sexual harassment training program. Thursday the twenty-fourth, attended the Historic Commission Meeting. Tuesday, November seventh, met with Ken Laird to discuss upcoming America Two Fifty festivities. There's gonna be a follow-up meeting with East Goshen in December. Wednesday, November thirteenth, attended the Green Energy Expo in Philadelphia. And Thursday, November fourteenth, attended the Cato Vault Conference.
Okay, I think you all covered it pretty well. I don't really have any announcements. They covered a lot of it, thank you all very much. You're all very active. I love that. Okay. Moving on to item number twelve, which is the Township Manager's announcements. Mr. Bayshore, what do you have for us tonight?
Madam Chair, before I get into my announcements, I want to go back to senior rebate. The property with the PO box Mr. Hellman asked about is on New Jersey Avenue, and that PO box is the same one that the county has with the county address. All right, so the first item I have is our monthly newsletter. We'll schedule it about the end of this week, on November twenty-second. The Township Building will be closed on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in recognition of the Thanksgiving holidays. Our local shared camp grant, I am pleased to announce that on October twenty-second, we were notified that the township was awarded a eighty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollar grant from the state through the local shared camp program from the Commonwealth Financing Authority, which is for the installation of sidewalk on the south side of West Rosedale Avenue. That was included in our budget discussion earlier this evening. We have not received the grant agreements yet. We did receive an email from the Commonwealth Financing Authority. We provided them the updated information, so those should be forthcoming. But as the board's aware, the township submitted two applications for this program, and the second application proposed the acquisition of a property on Ashbridge Road to address flooding. That application was not funded, and the property owner was notified. I did not receive any kind of response from the property owner, but we did notify him accordingly.
I was not aware of that. Okay.
So that was the property on Ashbridge Road. That was in our regional feasibility study to get access to acquire. That was next to Cloud Park.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that application was not funded. And any determination on whether or not to resubmit is at the discretion of the board. So that can be, if the board wants to have a future discussion on that, that is at your discretion.
We need the property owner to respond to your email.
Yes, he does not yet. The equipment that was authorized for sale has all, actually as of yesterday, has all been picked up and paid for. So total sales this year was roughly two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars on surplus equipment. Carol, on our multi-mobile transportation fund from Montgomery Avenue, Carol Engineering submitted the township's grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on October thirty-first. The application was similar to the one submitted to DCD earlier this year, and we're still waiting on an award announcement from that program. However, as discussed earlier this evening, we did include that project in the 2025 preliminary budget that was authorized for advertisement.
Do you have any timeline on when they submit the grant?
Always guess on eight to twelve months from when you submit it.
So Chris, just on that, I mean, one of the reasons so many of these projects drag on is we wait to hear before we authorize doing any work, including Carol Engineering doing design work. So eight to twelve months from now, those projects are not gonna get done in 2025.
You cannot, once you submit a grant application, you cannot receive reimbursement for any costs that are incurred prior to awarding.
Yeah. I just want to point that out. It's one of the reasons we have these struggles with spending money in here. We say we're gonna spend it.
The grant, so anytime, especially with DCD, anytime that you, anytime you submit an application, because it goes through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, which I believe meets every other month, you're looking at probably an eight to twelve month timeline, would you agree, Brian, based on your experience?
At least about sixteen months.
I mean, it is possible, though, for the one we submitted back in July, that will hit February, March.
Hopefully.
To DCD, and if it's a full award, then we're good to go.
We, I agree, and we submitted the, but we also submitted a program to the Trails and Greenways for Community Park. That was in May, I believe. So we're still, we're coming up on seven months since that was submitted.
Since we're talking about grants, let's just go back to Rosedale Avenue. We got that grant award, right? When can we put that out to bid?
Well, once we get the agreements in place. So we're still waiting for the contract documents. We sent information back to the state today for information for the contract. So once we get those executed, then we can get a proposal from Carol Engineering and put everything out to bed.
Any idea what the timeline is for moving forward with that?
I can't say. They have to go through their process. You are beholden to the state.
And that project hasn't fully engineered yet.
Yeah. They're still engineering. It has to be done with that project.
But there's no reason we don't, we can get, we can get that project done in the summer of next year. There's no reason.
The sidewalk?
It's a, it's a four-hundred linear foot stretch of sidewalk. And I've already talked to, I already talked to Chris Peterson about getting us a proposal. We're just waiting for the grant agreements to get executed.
You say there's more engineering needs to be done for that, too?
Yes. It was just a preliminary layout.
Okay. Is there any reason why we can't proceed on the engineering end?
Engineering costs are part of the grant award.
Okay, so we have.
Any other announcements?
Just a few. I'll try and keep these quick. Next meeting for the zoning ordinance update for the Land Planning Committee is December fourth at six P.M., and the next committee meeting for the Park and Recreation Open Space Plan is December fifth at six P.M. And as Mr. Walsh discussed, related to the solar energy, energy rate project, we did submit our application to Natural Lands for fifty thousand dollars for PICO's Green Region Program, and I did also provide them the supplemental resolution that was approved by the board on November seventh. So our application is complete, and they expect award announcements in the spring. The first phase of improvements to Community Park, construction began on November twelfth, and in speaking to Dorian, everything seems to be going well. And then we have the second phase of improvements included in our budget for 2025, and we're still waiting on our third grant application for that program. Finally, some upcoming community events that we have tomorrow night in partnership with Westchester University. We'll have another See Even More Stars Planetarium event for the Park and Recreation Department, and we're looking to do more of those in the next year. The next Yard and Waste Collection Day will be December seventh, and then December twenty-first. We have multiple bus trips coming up, including a trip to Radio City Music Hall on December second, and another trip to New York City on December seventh. And information to register is on the township website. The holiday decorating events will be held on December, December tenth, eleventh, and twelfth with six sessions, and all of those are full. The Historic Commission will have their next speaker series on December twelfth, which will be a conversation with Thomas Jefferson and John Adams. And information, that's at the Township Building, and information to register is also on the Township website. And we have Breakfast with Santa coming up on December fourteenth at PICO's Restaurant from nine to ten-thirty, and registration is on the Township website as well. And our next Traffic Safety Committee meeting is December tenth at seven P.M. to nine P.M. at the Township Building.
Okay, thank you for all of those announcements.
That was a lot.
I have a request. Because the, because Wawa moved their appointment with the planning commission, is it possible for us to notify the residents of us for the new planning commission date?
We typically do not issue notifications for subdivision land development projects. We post everything on our website. I would be hesitant to kind of treat this any differently than any other land development application. But.
Why? Because that's like an official act of us reaching out or something?
I mean, I don't, it's, we don't do notifications for any other land development applications other than posting information on the website when the agenda gets published. So I don't know if we want to start treating anything differently. That's just my concern.
I know. I just feel like, you know, this has been a long process, and we've been very upfront about, we want to be communicating, we want to be transparent with them, we want them to be involved in the process. And I know that I got a call from a resident when this was canceled, sort of asking, you know, when's the next meeting? And maybe they're interested. I know they are checking the website. I'm just wondering.
Maybe for this instance, as it comes.
I don't know. I also don't know if they're coming back, if they're gonna come in December. The indication was that they weren't gonna, Brian's gonna do his review, and they were gonna come when Brian issues his review letter. So I don't know if that's gonna be at the December tenth meeting.
Well, maybe when you do find out, if you could send out an email to those who are parties to the original hearing, it would just be the curse.
No problem.
Chris, you did reach out to the people who are parties at Commisional Use Hearings about the.
We'd like to know about the comments about this.
Yeah, and did you get any feedback from those you've heard party status?
We heard from, I want to say, three or four, and all those comments were sent on. We also heard from two or three, two or three members of the planning commission, I believe it was three, and we did forward those comments on as well.
Good.
And all the comments that we have received have been forwarded on to PennDOT, and as discussed at the last meeting, I feel as though from PennDOT's review letters, review letter that they issued, they took the township's concerns to heart in what they put in there. It was like a five-day.
That's great. That's really good.
I mean, I, again, I'm happy to, I'm happy to let them know it's on the agenda.
I think it would be nice.
I always say the tools survey feedback is excellent. I mean, there was a lot of the comments.
I agree.
A lot of people commented.
I know. I'm gonna want to go through that a little bit more.
Yeah, it was very interesting. I'm a reminder, a lot of people.
I've been, I've.
I'm just glad the public responded, gave her feedback, just what they wanted to see. I think it was great feedback.
I've been very impressed with the response that we've gotten to the survey for the park plan.
Yeah.
Just curious, how did they want the survey? Did they send out mail orders?
So we did, we did a couple different options. There were business cards that were handed out. In fact, Ms. Smith handed out a ton of business cards at the Fall Festival at the end of October.
I made them sign right here.
We put information on, we put information on our website, we put information on social media, we put information in the newsletter, and also Ken and Tom had a very creative idea for the open house, where they made stickers and put them on all of the beverages at the open house. And they did that again at the Fall Festival, so people could just scan a QR code and take it directly from their phone.
And they were actually doing that. They were putting it on trees, too. So while they were sitting there waiting for their child to make a scare alarm, or whatever, they could do the survey.
Very cool.
I think we got very creative in how we reached people with those student shows.
Okay. Let's move on to item number thirteen, which is the Township Engineer's Stormwater Announcements and Will of the Graystone update.
So I have a few stormwater announcements and a couple of graystone announcements tonight. First project I will bring up tonight is Basin Road, the stream restoration project. The design is progressing. I should, based upon a conversation with Chris Peterson today, he's waiting on two vendors to get back for pricing for technologies to be used for the stream bank stabilization I talked about for vegetation. If they get it back in time, we'll have it for next month with the price estimate, but he doesn't want to do his partials on it, he doesn't know what he's, so he's waiting on vendors to get back to him. Second project is the Government Services Center Basin. I did talk with Chris this afternoon. As of four forty-five P.M. today, two contractors have already submitted bids to do the open tomorrow. They had six contractors start the bid. They don't know how they're gonna finish, but as of four forty-five, two had formally submitted a bid. So we know we have two bids. They'll reopen tomorrow, and then we'll have a report at the next board meeting. Additionally, for the MS four, on October thirtieth, we had a basin inspection performed with me and the DEP for the basin at Idlewild and also the basin at Pine Valley. I have not received the reports from them for either basin, but based on the feedback that was on site, there's no issues noted. And also, a note for MS four, December nineteenth is our permanent cycle inspection, which the DEP will be coming here to the Township Building and performing their inspection of our MS four, where they go through our report, they inspect the township facilities, and whatever else they want to do.
What date is that?
December nineteenth. Graystone, three cul-de-sacs were paved. Seeger, the East End of Seeger, the East End of Souza, and Phillips Lane were all finished paved by a contractor. I did speak with Randy at Carol Engineering. He was not on site for all of it because of his other things. He's gonna go check them out and make sure that they were paved appropriately, the finished paving is still on those three roads. In the end, Phillips will stay private, Seeger and Souza will be dedicated when everything's done. Additionally, Phase One punch list, there's two outstanding items. I was notified yesterday that one of the two items was completed. I have to go verify that. I haven't done that yet, but there was still one item on the punch list that hadn't, have not been notified of that was completed.
Go ahead. Phase?
The trails.
Okay.
The open space, Phase One Open Space Punch List.
Phase One Open Space, right.
Yes, there was one item that the contractor submitted to me on site that he hadn't finished yet. Even if Ray said, "The contractor, I didn't finish that bit." So I'm waiting. The contractor said, "Let me know when it's done," and I've never heard from the contractor.
And the dams?
The dams, that was, that's where I saw the contractor. He was at the dam with Jason from Ousmane, and they still hadn't heard from DEP. DEP had not approved their, their, I'll say, fix of the basin, of the dam. So I don't know, I have not been notified they're gonna work on it. They've been told in emails and voicemails and in person, whatever they do, they need to make sure they let us know if they're gonna be working on the dam. They have not notified us that yet. So there's still a dam to be accessed, and the only access is through the trails to get to the dam to fix it. It's the one behind Gershwin. That's the one that has to be repaired. So that's something to keep in mind about dedication is, if we dedicate the park, we're gonna be having an open park with the construction site using the trails to access it.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you very much.
That's all I asked for today.
Any questions for, for Brian?
I just want to say, I, I think my neighbor told me that the Pine Valley area that was cleaned up, they went in and did a pretty extensive cleanup in there, and then the neighbors were just wondering how often that would happen. So.
As needed.
As needed.
Probably every.
That wasn't happening.
Every two or three years is probably.
Oh, two or three years? Okay.
Based upon what the DEP said.
Okay.
And the cleanup was to remove invasive and fallen trees.
Right.
So that's what, that's, that was removed. There's gonna be a project in the spring to, we were looking to buy the more grass seed to, the initial, the front end isn't fully stabilized, it didn't fully grow in. front end isn't fully stabilized, didn't fully grow in. So we're going to try to get that seeded in the spring.
Let them know. Thank you.
And that is owned by the township, right?
That one's owned by the township. Idlewild is private. It's owned by the Homeless Association. So anything needs to be done on that, because it's been forward to H O A for that development happening. It's not a township base.
Ms. Ward, did you have a question?
I forgot. Um, yeah. Do you think of a, yeah, the dam. So the dam is, the Gershwin, is that the estate homes?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the dam that has the.
It's a dam that has the old border of.
And what needs to be done to it?
It's leaking. The water's flowing right through the face of the dam.
Oh, so when, when, I go back there and see the water, that water's not supposed to be fall over the dam?
No, it's just coming through the face of the dam.
Oh.
It's more the top. They should.
It is very nice back there. I've been enjoying it.
Thank you, Mr. Kolikowski, for those announcements. And we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is zoning officers' announcements.
Uh, nothing significant to, um, announce, uh, other than there's been a lot of talk and movement with, uh, development between, uh, potentially Twenty Isle Slane, um, ten oh nine Westchester Pike, and then also eleven oh five Saunders. Um, all three may be appearing before the zoning hearing for the next couple of months. Um, eleven oh five Saunders has submitted an application, but at this time it's incomplete. Uh, but just, like I said, a lot of talk with, uh, development and redevelopment has been taking place in the last, in the last month.
Eleven oh five Saunders, the variance there is for about this one hundred foot buffer from residential.
Correct.
But there's, there isn't any residential on Saunders, is there?
There's a residential use behind Saunders. It's a partner complex.
It's the.
Harrison Hill.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have got the Harrison Hill parcel.
And our code reads any residential district or residential use.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions, Michelle?
Three oh one West Town Way, what's the status of that? According to what you're saying, they sent in their letter of complacency by February seventeenth, but the grass is very tall.
So I do know that enforcement of grass has taken, um, a little bit of a hiatus due to the burn ban. Um, it's my, it's of my opinion that I, I would rather not, unless it's egregious, have people mow grass and potentially start a fire. Um, we've seen a lot of those in the county recently. Uh, but in regards to three oh one West Town Way, um, Aubrey in our department has been handling a lot of the property maintenance portions. And I know that she's been in touch with that owner. Um, and they've been working on that letter. Um, I know grass is one of them. There's an abandoned boat and an abandoned car there. Um, so she is in progress with, uh, seeking achieving voluntary.
Are you getting collaboration involved from the owner?
Uh, yeah, she's, she is getting, um, some movement with him. Um, so there is, there is some talks there. I believe that, that property still needs some additional work. Um, she's also been in communication with the neighbors in that area to ensure that, you know, it's getting followed up once since it is back a little from West Town Way.
All right, thank you.
Um, I have a question regarding eight hundred Falcon Lane. Um, it's been on there every month. I know we do.
Yes.
We go to see what we can do to get that moving and getting the points from the neighbors with good reason.
There's an estate issue there. Um, so without divulging too much detail, um, the program was passed. There is an estate issue with some of the children, um, that they're currently working on their own legal. I've reached out to Kristen to ask if there's much that we can do. Um, she had said, besides, you know, assisting them through an estate issue, which isn't our, our area of expertise, nor is it, you know, the township's obligation. Uh, it's just kind of one of those things that we have to wait until the estate is satisfied. Um, so fortunately, that is just one that keeps popping up, and we just keep checking it every so often. That's your all day.
Appreciate all your help. That was a great neighbor of mine. Can we get the abandoned four-flat tire car removed from the property? It just looks like an invitation for trouble.
That is, that is the biggest issue. Um, the property is, as you can see, is being maintained. It's being landscaped by a landscaping company, um, although, uh, maybe not aesthetically, most aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood in the area. Unfortunately, the property maintenance code, uh, only speaks to grass and not shr- overgrown shrubbery. The car, um, has been on my radar. Um, without a title in hand, you might be able to call salvage yard. It's on private property, though. Um, so unfortunately, I don't think the township has a legal recourse of action to remove a private vehicle from a private property. Um, it is something that I can talk to Kristen about to see if there's another avenue. Uh, but, and, and I think I have your email. Um, I can be in touch.
But I think there's been past cases where people have had abandoned cars on their properties and been forced to remove them.
The downfall of that is, is there's nobody to force to remove. Um, the property owners of the, the property is still in, um.
Probate.
Probate. Um, the property owner who we would cite, um, has since passed. Um, any court action would just sit open because he is no longer there. The only thing, and I am speaking totally, you know, candidly, the only thing that I can think of is somehow, um, sit it, put it, pushing through some citations, getting it into court, and potentially, um, working with Kristen's office on some sort of enforcement of sale of the property. But I don't even know if that's a recourse of action through property maintenance.
And Chief Carroll ticketed?
No, sorry.
I don't think Chief Carroll can ticket it on private property. So, uh, but I will, Mr. Wolf, I will be in touch. I think I have your email from, um, us working together in the past. So, uh, I'll reach out to Kristen and see what, see what action's going to be taken, and, and we'll be in touch.
Yeah, there's other neighbors that have been complaining to me with good reason, too, also. Um, I think the children just can't settle in four years, and they can't settle on what they want to do with the property. So until they settle internally within the family, not much more we can do legally, but I'm, I'm on it, and I'm trying.
Okay. Okay. Moving on then to item number fifteen, which is the approval of the Board Supervisor's meeting minutes of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or major changes to the minutes from this meeting?
I just have one correction on page eleven. Uh, towards the bottom of the page there is, uh, it's one of the bullet points here. Letter to businesses subject to the policy during prohibition or issued to us in Chapter twenty-four, twenty twenty-four enforcement will begin on March ninth. It should be twenty twenty-five, which is the type of.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's all right.
Thanks, John.
I have one correction on page five. The one, fifth paragraph down starts with Ms. Ward. Uh, it, the word sentiment is in there. It should be sediment.
Good job.
You want me to just change this?
Yes, let's stay on.
I have a couple of changes.
Fine.
I'll just wait till everybody's done.
Okay. Um.
I'm done.
Anything else? All right, somebody want to make a?
I'll make the motion approve.
Well, okay, well, why don't we, why don't we hear?
You ask some changes, right?
Okay.
I'm kind of curious. I think maybe the minutes are done by A I first, but it sort of appeared to me. So under public comment, uh, second paragraph, Charles Golden after Doug White, the second sentence needs corrected. It says, Mr. Golden stated that the board should approve a hundred percent tax refund, uh, for the residents in twenty twenty-five, and it goes on and on. Actually, it should say, uh, the board should approve a hundred percent property tax refund for twenty twenty-four and a millage rate deduction of two mils to one for twenty twenty-five. And then towards the end, it says, he believes that the township is grossly over budget. Uh, I, I don't use the word grossly, so I'm not where that, not sure where that came from. Uh, but I think it meant the township general fund balance is over budget.
So we watch, so, and these are put together, they're based on the video. So.
Right.
I can go back and review it to see.
I appreciate it. Um, then there's one other comment I have, um, it had to do with the basin discussion. Let me find it really quick. I apologize. And thank you very much for your time. There's the basin.
Page four or five?
Yeah. Um, again, Ms. Ward, Ms. Ward. Charles Golden, resident of West Goshen Township, stated that he agrees with Ms. Ward in opposing the project and noted, uh, proposed cost. Mr. Bejor stated that the board has approved this project as part of the annual budget, and it does not need to be reauthorized to go out for bid. Is, is that correct? Is that?
Yes.
So like the discussion we had tonight, which was a review of the budget, we really didn't get into the capital. That was the night before. Anything that goes into print in the budget does not have to be approved in the future before it goes out for bid?
Once, so the budget is a policy document of the board. It sets their policy. So once they, once they authorize the budget, that is the authorization to put that project out to bid. The bid comes back to the board for final order. Board always has the option to reject all bids.
Okay, that's just a new understanding for me. And then if I can, just one more minute of your time. Uh, I strongly recommend that the board attend the Thomas Jefferson, John Adams debate. It was last year, Mr. Wolf, when we were here when Thomas Jefferson spoke at this very podium.
Excellent.
It was excellent. And that is why I show up at every meeting from what Thomas Jefferson said last year. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, so, a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, you can add the correction.
Now, I've been the motion. Do you have all those changes?
I'm gonna have to go back and watch the video.
Continuing on his review of the.
Yes, Mr. Gold.
But just for the record, spelling of my name on pages two, five, and seven, it's D E capital P R I S C O. There's no L.
Yeah, just, just get that right.
Of course, so that you can indict me later on.
It's got my name all the time.
So do you want to?
Yes, Mr. Gold.
And, and I'm sorry, there was one other thing, Mr. Bejor. Um, when we were talking with Ms. Smith, it said that the, uh, the spreadsheet had key missing parts. That had to do with, are we updated that, um, spreadsheet to include September, but the version that was probably on the table was the month before.
It was on September, so it's August thirty-first.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes with those corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Item number sixteen is approval of the Treasurers' Report dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for the general fund, sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund, and the bills to be paid from these funds. Support?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Treasury Report and the bills to be paid.
Okay, is there a second?
There's no second.
All right. Starting discussion, I'm going to go to the big round for it. No? Okay. Yes, Ms. Ward.
I should have brought this up during the, uh, budget presentation, but as you know, on the Treasurers' Report, it shows the restricted park capital fund. There's fourteen hundred, or one point four million dollars. But in the budget, that one point four million dollars in this fund cannot be found. And I just think that when we have a separate fund with that much money in, it should be part of the budget document. Um, specifically, a concern is in the budget, it says, um, transfer from that restricted fund is one point seven million dollars. Right now, there's only one point four million dollars in there. I just think it would be helpful, and I think, actually, you did ask Chris, Christine at one point, maybe include that, so.
But the budget is based on the D C D chart of accounts. So that's where the different funds in the budget come from. I think you're confusing fund, the bank account, with fund what comes from the D C D chart of accounts. There is nothing that can correspond on the D C D chart of accounts that would meet this, meet this type of account. So when there is an expenditure that comes out, it's budgeted in the capital reserve fund, and then the revenue is shown as an, as like an interim transfer going into the capital reserve fund. And that one point seven million dollars is based on a forecast for our additional building permits primarily for Graystone. Is that where it comes from?
Well, not building permits, the park and twenty-five hundred per.
Yeah, per, yeah, when a building permit is issued, it's per lot.
So essentially, we're transferring that entire amount, one point seven, from restricted park into capital next year?
Well, it's the fund, it's the fund, the capital projects. It's the fund, the projects that are in the capital reserve fund related to parks. And there might be that many capital projects, particularly with, particularly with the work in, um, West Goshen Community Park. That's a big portion of it.
So this fund next year will might be at zero balance?
Potentially. Again, we're waiting on grants. It's going to depend, this is going to depend on that.
To, to, I'm sorry, to just, we forget the D C D with, not D C D, uh, we've got county grant, had a D C D grant for the.
We have a D C and R, we have a county and D C and R grant. We're waiting on D C D.
So would they get credited to restricted parks? Would they just get credited into capital reserve?
They'll just get credit in the capital reserve. So when you look in the capital reserve fund and revenue, there's like one point one six five million dollars in grant funding.
Yeah.
If we get awarded the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from D C D.
So it doesn't reinvest from there back to this account?
Correct. So the restricted parks fund is utilized to pay for the park's equipment purchases and for park projects. But that would go towards part of our match requirement because we have to make thirty percent match requirements, suppose.
No, but I mean, it's a good point. I think, and we have talked about it several times, it would be nice to have that information, even just for, like, the board, too, um, to see how much is in the restricted parks account and kind of monitor that for.
And then one last regarding that, is the one million dollars, um, from the developer anywhere in the twenty twenty-five budget?
No, because we don't have a timeline. We don't have a timeline for dedication. Um, and that's going to be set up as it's in a separate bank, bank account. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be responsible to budget for without a timeline for dedication.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve?
To a motion, yes, I agree.
Okay, all right. All in favor of approving the Treasurers' Report, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. This is a long meeting.